All right. Thank you all very much for coming tonight on our meeting tonight, September 3rd. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Spandola.
Here.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right. We're all here and we're gonna have an invocation this evening from Father Avram Brown from Saint Isidors Catholic Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Nick Morris. Thanks, Nick.
Very glad to be able to join you here this evening. I don't know how it was for you yesterday, but at our parish school, I gave all the teachers and all the students the day off. So I hope that was a part of your story as well. But it's good for us to be back to work again this evening. Let us pray. God of the ages, God of our fathers who have watched over the human family from generation to generation, we thank you that in your providential plan, you allow us to be participants with you in drawing this world to greater beauty, greater goodness through the outpouring of your spirit, a spirit of wisdom, a spirit of guidance, the spirit of truth. Heavenly Father, even as you allow us to be co-creators with you in laboring to bring about a greater world, we ask that through the gift of that spirit, you would inspire each of us to participate to the fullness of our ability for the betterment of our brothers and sisters. Give to each member of our community meaningful work, meaningful labor, that they can take pride in lifting up their brothers and sisters, providing for their family and sustaining themselves through the work of their hands. Heavenly Father, even as you have called us together in community, we ask that you would grace us with your spirit of fellowship, that we might see the path that you opened before us. And we pray all this in the name of your Son, Jesus our Savior. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have Agenda Item Number One. But before we do that, I want to acknowledge the fact that you're gonna see, you see a new chair or new face in the chair over here of our city manager, Mr. Michael Rock. His first meeting, first day today. We want to welcome him with open arms. Along with his wife Courtney, sitting right here in the front. Welcome Courtney. Looking forward to many good things working with you. Now if I may ask the rest of the council to join me up front and ask Diana and Matt if he's here. Is he here? Oh, how convenient. All right. All right. As you all know, Diana stepped up when we had a personnel change for our city manager, Mr. Krager decided to retire. Diana stepped up and among many things, she has been so dedicated, so professional, one of the best choices I think we have made so far. And that's without hesitation. It's unbelievable, the dedication, the professionalism, the insight. All hours of the day and night, she's there and really quick and with always good, sound advice that we all really appreciate. So this flowers and a plaque, I mean, she didn't even want that. And by the way, I may remind you all that she didn't even accept one dime extra pay for stepping up as our city manager. So that is a leader, that is professional, that is a dedicated individual and this, we're happy to do this. And I'm gonna read this to you. This is a wooden plaque we had custom made for her. Diana Langley, interim city manager, February 18th, 2019 through August 31st, 2019. Thank you for stepping up and taking on the role of interim city manager. Your hard work speaks volumes of the kind person you are, efficient, organized, and results oriented. Your dedication and commitment really helped us out during a difficult time at the City of Uba City. We just wanted to make sure you know how much you are valued and appreciated. And then of course, today's date. And on behalf of the entire city council, to hereby commend and thank Diana Langley for her leadership role within the City of Uba City. There you go. Dare I ask if you want to say anything? All right, good.
Thank you very much. I want to thank council for the opportunity. It was a great opportunity. I want to thank the administration team of Judy, George, and Terrell for their support, the other directors who were a great support network for me, and then Ben Moody for stepping up in terms of public works to take on a larger role in public works. So thank you all very much.
All right, I think we have one more up here. If you all will please welcome Crystal Martin and Ser Optimus, folks. Whoever wants to come on up, come on up. So we have cupcakes over here shaped like a 90. That's because Ser Optimus is 90th birthday. It was founded in 1921 in Oakland, California, and there are now over 75,000 members in 130 countries. Ser Optimus International is a global volunteer movement working together to transform the lives of women and girls. While it's true that both men and women live in poverty, face discrimination, and must overcome obstacles throughout history, in every country, in every country in the... I'm supposed to say world probably. Women, don't you think? Women and girls face additional obstacles and discrimination solely because of their gender. It's good here. Established in September 1929, Marysville Uba City is celebrating 90 years of service to the Uba Sutter community and is one of the oldest clubs in the world. Notable local community projects over the years include, but are not limited to, in 1947, they provided food for the Children's Ward of London Hospital in England. In 1956, they set up a flood disaster program after the 1955 Christmas flood. 1968, they planted 50 cherry trees and 20 Japanese maple trees around Ellis Lake to replace trees given by the Japanese American Citizen League that were uprooted by vandals during World War II. 1982 began long-term service project assisting in upgrading and remodeling Casa Desperanza. In 1995, contributed $10,000 to the SRT, which is Sexual Assault Response Team at Rideout Hospital. 2006 began the Girls on the Run Program to teach self-esteem and life skills to girls aged eight to 11. 2015, worked with the Salvation Army Depot to provide $24,000 to renovate the women's bathroom. And participated in the Dress a Girl Around the World Program, because a girl wearing a new dress presents an appearance that she is well-cared-for and may discourage would-be predators. So now therefore, be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Uba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, congratulate the members of Ser Optimus International, Marysville, and Uba City on their 90th anniversary of service to our community. Congratulations you all. Thank you very much. There's nothing to sing, so I don't know. I'll ask it his birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Ser Optimus. Happy birthday to you.
And many more.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody and being part of an organization as amazing as this that really does invest in dreams of women and children is life-changing. It changed my life almost five years ago when I joined and it's encouraging seeing what it does around the world. I went to Malaysia in July and seen all the 125 countries that are involved. It is amazing and being able to work with these women every week is incredible to give back to the community. So thank you for doing this and thank you for recognizing our group. And in two years, we're gonna be 100 years old and there's gonna be a really big party in San Francisco. So welcome, be encouraged to go to that.
Well, congratulations again, ladies. Thank you. All right, next is item number three, Public Safety Police Presentation. Welcome Chief Landon.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. With me tonight, I also have Assistant Chief Jeremy Garcia, who is in charge of our investigation unit, and Commander Baker, who is in charge of the patrol unit.
They're pretty excited about their birthday.
90 years, that's impressive. So for tonight's presentation, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the basic structure, our calls for service, the Uniform Crime Reporting Part One Crimes, which is how the FBI compiles data to compare, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but they do compare that with other data in the United States. The areas of emphasis for this coming year are priorities and any questions that the council may have or anybody from the general public. Our mission statement, work in partnership with our community. This is the basic beat structure for Uba City. So it's about, I'll tell you how many miles exactly here in a minute, but it's broken up into five different beats. We have one officer assigned to each beat. We try to do that for familiarity, so that same beat, that same officer will work for the entire four-month period before they rotate over. And that allows the citizens in that particular area to get familiar with them and to establish a rapport. So we're broken up into five different beats. Beat one is in the northwest corner and beat five would be the southeast area of Uba City. Beat six is an area that was incorporated by the City of Uba City, but it's currently patrolled by Sutter County Sheriff. So we have 66 sworn officers. Currently, we have zero positions that are vacant. And I know if you've been around for a while, you've seen that number vary greatly. We're very, should be knocking on wood here, but that doesn't mean that every officer is on the road right now. That just means that all our positions are filled or in background. And with retirements or attrition, of course, that number will increase and decrease. In order, just a quick reference here, so we have three different avenues that we approach for hiring officers. Number one is to hire a recruit, which is fresh off the street with no experience, could be military. It takes basically 14 months from the time that we bring them onboard with the academy, with field training, with the backgrounds in psychology, before they become effective to go on the road and operate on their own. The other two avenues is what we call an academy graduate, and that's somebody that's already in the academy or has graduated. They can get on the road from four to 10 months, depending on where they are in the academy currently when we do the processing of hiring them. Unfortunately, that is very competitive right now and you don't see a lot of candidates that you're able to get in that area. And the third one is our favorite way of getting officers, because they're the most road-ready, they have experience, they have a track record, but they also are hard, because we're competing with the Sacramento region, somebody could live in Uba City and get a job in Roseville that would pay considerably higher. So what we try to offer them is the team spirit, the community, living in the community that you're at and being a part of this environment. And we can usually get them on the road from two to four months. Currently, we have an officer from Paradise and we have an officer from Marysville that are going through the field training program as laterals. We have 25 civilians, which could be records, clerks, administrative support, and we have 14.65 miles of jurisdiction with the five beats that we showed earlier. For patrol, they're broken up into teams, 36 officers, six sergeants. We are currently in the process, when we get fully staffed, to have a homeless liaison officer that was approved by the council this past year. So we're really looking forward to having that onboard and working. We have four motor units and one sergeant that primarily focus on traffic issues and they operate out of motorcycles. We have, with the council's approval again this year, we now have three K-9 units. Eddie, the newest one, is currently in training. So once he gets more familiar with being around people, we'll bring him out and start showing him. And then we have five community service officers who are officers that respond to cold calls. They're not, they're not the same level of training as far as responding to calls in progress, but they do do a great job for what they're trained to do. Administrative support, we have 10 dispatchers. They're all trained to dispatch police fire and they're also trained to provide NEMT, but they're also trained to provide emergency primary response for somebody that's choking or CPR, somebody that's having an issue. They can talk the person through that while they're waiting for the ambulance or somebody to arrive. We have a communication center coordinator, five records clerks, and one community policing coordinator, who is probably the most overworked, but very valuable to this department to get us the community engagement that we're so seeking to do. Our investigation unit, and this is where you're gonna see, our primary role in the police department right now is to provide 911 service. And 911 calls, we want to make sure we're there to respond. And as we have officers in training and stuff, we have vacancies on the road. We're not gonna leave the patrol units vacant. We're gonna first pull from the investigation units and other units until we have somebody trained. So although we're slotted for six detectives, we currently have two vacancies. We have two gang investigators, one's currently vacant, one detective sergeant, and two community service officers, one that's part-time crime analysis and one that does the processing of major crimes that happened in progress, or crimes that happened. We have a Net Gang and Narcotics Task Force. That is a regional effort that we have, trying to get more bang for our buck using our allies in Sutter County, Marysville, and Uba County. We work in partnership, because we do realize that all these criminals are going all the way across with free access. So we share intelligence, we share resources, and we share officers. And then of course, Evidence and Property Technician. Some of the bigger accomplishments, and we'll bring it up to one of these showings. We really wanted to show the Pharo laser scanner, which it's basically reenacting a crime scene in 3D digital images. What is it, 20 something million shots per second or something? Okay, that's what I'm gonna stick with. It's a lot of millions, but basically what it does, it allows the DA to see that crime scene, look under the bed, see the things that you would see if you were actually on the crime scene. That's a tough question, I know. We have a crime scene van and Cellhawk analytic software. I'm looking to Jeremy, because he knows what that is.
We've tried to improve our capabilities in our investigations unit. More and more, we're spending an inordinate amount of time chasing cell phones and tablets and that's, that's the new world we live in. And so, you know, we write lots and lots of search warrants, pulling data out, but the problem is it becomes, it's too much for us to deal with, the personnel hours involved in that. So we've been enhancing our capabilities now. We're able to basically drag and drop the returns we get from the various cell carriers and so forth. And then we can actually plot a lot as far as a path and where people have been and so forth. It does all the work for us. So our detectives are really excited for it.
These are the types of calls we responded to. So basically, I broke it down into two different timeframes. One is 2018 and one is 2019, from January to June, which is, it takes us a little while to compile all the data, because we have to continuously input records. So in 2018, these were our top calls. Number one was welfare checks. Number two was suspicious calls. Three was alarm. Four is follow-ups, then disturbance. And sixth was transients. But with transients, I know it's a big, we have an issue right now with homelessness across the United States. We are certainly not unique in that. But as you see the amount of calls that we're responding to, if you can imagine how many per day that is, and then you look at the other things that are tied into that. So we may get a welfare check on a transient that doesn't show transient, but a lot of our welfare checks, suspicious, they're all tied into the transients. It's a, it's a large issue that we're dealing with. So we're probably responding to anywhere from 10 calls on a busy day and sometimes more than that that don't get coded. This year, it's changed a little bit, but not much. You're seeing the same type of response. So that was 2018. This is 2019, from January to June. Same calls are basically there. It looks like transients went down a little bit, but I think we're just still coding them differently sometimes. 2018, not this year, but last year, homicides went from zero in 2017 from a previous high of eight to zero back to one. Violent crimes, and these are just raw data, so it's hard to get a, wrap your finger around it, but I just want to throw some numbers out there to let you know that even though you'll see percentage increases, it's really not that great of an increase. Violent crimes went from 255 to 265. Property crimes went down significantly from 2207 to 1846. And then again, a lot of the stuff we're faced with is legislation from our people in Sacramento that dictates what's a felony, what's a misdemeanor, how much time people spend in jail, if they spend any time in jail, and a lot to do with our marijuana and drug sentencing. So I hope this isn't too busy, but this is all beats, Part One Crimes. So Part One Crimes are basically what I was saying earlier, that the FBI uses to classify crimes. This is what they measure. It's homicides, burglaries, rapes, aggravated assaults, and motor vehicle thefts. It's a three-year graph. So the larceny thefts, which are basically thefts, they went up, they started at 1389, they're currently down at 1356. You can see burglaries are trending down significantly. Motor vehicle thefts, we tend to have one of the higher areas in the United States, in the whole Sacramento Valley. But they've gone down this year from 370, or 2018, 17 to 18, from 379 to 256. Aggravated assaults went down. Robberies were about the same. Rapes are about the same. I think we're getting more reports of rapes. Rapes are not stranger on stranger, most of them. They're mostly date-type rapes or familiar, familial-type rapes. And again, our homicides went from eight to zero to one. This is January last year, from January to June, to compare to this year's stats for January to June. So larceny thefts are about the same, burglaries are about the same, motor vehicle thefts are pretty much the same. Aggravated assaults are about the same. Robberies have gone down significantly. Rapes have gone down. Homicides, we had a couple homicides this year, the one on Clark Avenue, and then we had one other one on Gray Avenue. We have two suspects in custody and one we're working a lot of leads on right now. Again, this is just raw data. So comparative data, we're below similar cities in crime rates in California. We're below the national average of cities from 50 to 99,000. We have less than half the crime rate of 20 years ago. Our gang task force, the Net Five Presence and Regional Crime Fighting Alliance is helping us a lot as we move forward and we're sharing the data and working together. And you can see property crime rate is trending down. Statewide trend is also the same. But again, we're trying to focus on regional alliances as we go through different areas. And I think with our new sheriffs that we've, they're very receptive to working with us and I think that's a great help for all of us in this community. We have three goals that we're trying to accomplish and all the other priorities that'll fall under that. We want to make Uba City PD the premier law enforcement agency in Uba Sutter. We want to continue to make this a safe community and we want to get involved in our community through engagement and partnership to enhance our quality of life. So in order to accomplish a premier law enforcement agency, we have to maintain our recruitment retention. We have to make sure that we're continued to get top-line equipment. We can't afford one to lose, to offset the other. We want to continue our training. There's a lot of new laws that are coming out of Sacramento that you'll see right now. The use-of-force law just changed. What we have to give to the public as far as calls for, with officer-involved shootings, with certain types of calls our officers are involved with, and that's gonna be very expensive, because we have to do video redaction. We just can't give them our video. So you're gonna see a lot of things that are developing through Sacramento that's gonna come down to us. We want to continue our leadership development and we want to maintain staffing levels that accomplish, that go along with the corresponding population increases. Again, I talked to this earlier about how we hire our, through recruiting. We have a recruiting team. We also use a lot of social media. We're seeing Bill Air Force Base is one of our big allies and people that we need to start talking with. And we're really trying to strengthen our cadet program, the youth in our community who are 16 to 22 years of age. Again, these are the things that affect a safe community. So for community engagement, I appreciate the fact that the council takes this so serious that they went out and we canceled our meeting on that particular first August, Tuesday, and went out with us. And it's important for us to see that everybody's in this together as a team effort. We truly appreciate that, the fact that we all get together, riding our cars together, and we talk to the same people at the same time. So perspective is very huge for us. Some of the things that we've done throughout the community, these are just a few photos. Yeah, he doesn't have a helmet on the bike, but he's over 16. Some of the other things, the community policing highlights, we have a radio show. We do a police open house, which this year with our new solar panels, new parking lot. We're doing one in October. We strongly, strongly recommend you guys come out and see us and get to see your police department, because things are changing a little bit and we're really proud of the things that we have. We want to show them off, because it helps all of us. We do do a women's self-defense seminar. This year, we did with the active shooter, things that went around the country. We made sure that we went out and talked to our community. We're giving more of those classes. We're trying to make them quarterly, where people can find out what they can do to make themselves less of a target during an active shooter scenario. And we're working in partnership with our local churches to do that. Again, some more photos. We are partnering with CHP also. And some of the other highlights, we have the new trading card program that we completed last year with our new officers. We'll be doing that again. Count Me In for Coffee, we try to do that at least monthly, where we get together with our community. First Fridays at the Senior Center, we we have an opportunity to do prescription drugs, takes back from the community, and just to talk to our seniors, which I'm getting pretty close to that. We have Citizens Academy in spring and fall. We currently have one going with 30 students right now. Visits with local schools, our community forum panels. We had one last year with Justice Pending when we had a few incidents in the Sacramento region. And then increasing our social media platform. We've reached out more on Facebook and Instagram. And then our camera surveillance program that we've just instituted, where people can get registered with the police department. And if you have a good camera system and you happen to be in the area where a crime happened, we'll know who to contact, because we'll have your contact information, which has proved beneficial already. And these are more of our areas of emphasis, but not our priorities. Filling the ancillary positions, so we can, the traffic and investigations officers clear, hiring. And actually, now not hiring, but getting a new homeless coordinator in place after other positions are filled. Clean and Safe, which is our transient issue. It's making sure that we're keeping our community safe by working with the other region also. Body worn cameras. We currently have, all of our officers have the body worn cameras that creates some recording issues as far as what we need to give to our community, or to the press through public request acts. And that's gonna be kind of overwhelming for a little bit until we get through the initial outlay of that. One of the big things we're working on this year, emergency preparedness. The Regional Training Center is not on there right now. Working with the county through training and simulations. They just had a new emergency person come onboard and they're going around right now, meeting everybody. So we'll get back into working with them for the training and simulations with the council, with the staff, and with the community. And of course, we're continuing to work with the neighborhood, neighboring law enforcement agencies, dealing with the homeless issues through regional coordination, realizing that we are not the answer, but we're part of the solution also. The Walton Annexation continues to be on our radar and we'll continue to monitor that and have the data available for what we need to have to provide the services when that master tax exchange agreement comes into effect. And then again, some of the other areas we're trying to make sure that we continue to emphasize. So what keeps us up at night right now? Recruitment and retention, because the unemployment rate is so low throughout the country, because the police get a lot of negative press as far as hiring. People don't want to come into this and be second-guessed so much. So we are competing with regular industries and everybody else as we go through this. And that's been identified for the past couple of years to the International Association's Chief of Police and California Chiefs of Police as a priority for law enforcement that we face. Again, legislation, we get a lot of legislation from the state. We just need to make sure that we're getting the funding that goes along with it as we train our, change our use-of-force terminology is what constitutes that. Hiring staffing to keep in our community safe, to maintain the levels as population increases, and our ability to obtain technology to meet demands. We're trying to work smarter, but some of this technology does require a little bit of outlay, but it can be exponentially reduced, the amount of hours that we're working on the same projects, like Assistant Chief Garcia pointed out. So with that, that wraps up my presentation and I'll open it up now to the council for any questions you may have.
One question, Rob. With Prop 47, I mean, luckily, it's good to see all these crimes, especially the most serious ones, dropping. I would assume, would have assumed that property crimes in particular would have gone up, burglary and larceny and whatnot. Is that down from what, an initial spike or?
It is down from that originating data that was recorded over that year. So there might have been an initial spike, but we're still down below the numbers of when Prop 47 went into effect. And I don't know if people get frustrated with reporting the minor crimes anymore, knowing they're not gonna get prosecuted. It's hard to say. Nobody's really done a study into that. But yeah, it's kind of surprising that.
Yeah, very. All right, thank you. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Council.
Number four, digital front door presentation by several folks. Beginning with George Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor, uh council members. My name is George Barlow. I'm an administrative analyst here at City Hall. Uh, Digital Front Door would like to present to you uh our website and specifically our online services. Our website uh today, if we look at Google Analytics, uh we receive about thirty-eight hundred hits to our website daily. Out of that thirty-eight hundred, uh sixty-four percent of those are uh new users. Brand-new URLs hitting our webpage uh daily. So thirty-four percent are returned. Uh, if we looked at the pages, our online services uh are in our top ten category of pages hit. So uh, a couple pages that we have. One is our fire department page connected to our website. And our police department page connected to our website. Both of those are in the top ten category of our website. But uh tonight, we'd like to present to you and also the community uh our online services that we have. So I have some great presenters here that will present their specific department pages.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Myers. I'm the Recreation Coordinator and I'm going to show you how to register for a recreation program. So you go right up to online services and then you would head over here to Recreation Enrollment. This is going to take you to our uh registration page where you can search for any activities. So right now, our next activity would be basketball. So if you type in basketball, it's going to bring up all of the available basketball programs. And it'll tell you the age group that you're looking for. So right here, if you're looking for ages six to seven, you would just click on that. Once you go to the program, it's going to show you how much it costs. Um, you'll see resident and non-resident. Non-resident just means you're not in city limits. It'll tell you the age group that you'll be looking at and then a little description about the program as well as the registration deadline. If this is the program that you decide that you would like to register for, you would click Add to Cart. And then it's going to take you to this page right here where you will create an account. Once you create an account, it'll take you through our registration process online where you just give us a little bit of information about yourself and your child that you're registering. It would be the same information that you would um fill out on our forms here at City Hall. And once you're done, you'll get a receipt to your email and you're all set to go and you're all registered. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erica and I work in the Finance Department. I'm here to show everyone how to make a water bill payment. So from our homepage, you'll put your cursor on online services and then select pay water sewer bill. We have two ways of making a payment to our website. The first one that I'll show you guys is the Uba City Quick Pay, which you'll select make a one-time payment. Um, by selecting the one-time payment, you'll need to have your utility bill in front of you. You'll go ahead and enter the first six digits of your account number and then the next, the last two digits. You'll enter in your service address and then be sure to click the Terms of Services. This option will allow you to view your most recent account balance and make a quick online, one-time payment on the online without having to register your account. The second option is to enroll for online bill pay services. You'll click enroll for online bill pay. And again, enter in the first six digits of your account number and then the last two with your service address and the terms of service again. By doing it this way, um you will be able to view and print your bills and have an online login each month and select auto payments. And that way you don't have to log in each month. You can get a, even receive an email and go that way. That's all I have for you guys tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jess Prey. I'm an admin analyst for the Development Services Department. And today I'll go over how to apply for a building permit. So um, once you click on online services, you'll click uh apply for a building permit. And it will take you to this page right here. So you will need to create a login. And once you uh log in, you will click on building. And from here, you want to click right here where it says create application. And then we do also have some terms that you will have to read and accept. From here, once you um click on this dropdown for building, there's a few different permits you could apply for. There's commercial, encroachment, residential, as well as other permit. And all of these do have the same fields that are required. So today we'll do a commercial. So um up here, there's a ribbon. It kind of walks you down the um the steps that we have. So the first one will be the location and people. It'll be the address of your job site and who is applying for the permit. So that could be if you're a contractor or the homeowner or an authorized agent. The next step will be your permit details. So this will be a job description of the permit you are applying for as well as your job applica- uh sorry, your job valuation. And that will be your materials and labor costs. The next step, you'll have your documents. So any supporting documents for your permit, such as any plan checks or if you do have authorization from your um from the homeowner to pull a per- permit. Next, you will have a chance to review your application, make any changes. And once you hit submit, I will come to the Development Services Staff and we will review, ensure that you are within city limits. And we can invoice you for your permit. Once it is invoiced, you'll receive an email and you have two options. You can either pay for it online and then come into City Hall to pick up your permit, or you can come into City Hall and pay for it at customer service and then come down to Development Services and pick up your permit. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Megan Anderson and I'm the interim Animal Shelter Manager for the Sutter Animal Services Authority. So tonight I'd like to show you some of the online links here that can help you um relevant to the animal shelter. So here you would click on Search a Pet. And if you're interested in looking at a dog or a cat or a different kind of an animal, you would click on the various topics here. And then if you scroll right back up here where it says Sutter Animal Services with our acronym SASSA. There are quite a few different topics here um that could be quite helpful to what you're looking for. Here's adopted pet, lost and found animals. These are different animal issues that you might have. Uh, volunteer uh applicants would want to look over right here. Licenses and fees. There's quite a few different topics that could help you. We are uh list, we're, we're located at two hundred Garden Highway. And another way to contact us is also to call five through zero eight two two seven three seven five. Okay? Thank you.
So our online services really help uh our residents to uh do things online versus uh come into uh City Hall here. A great way to help out our citizens. Uh, something that we're focusing on as a digital front door, on just getting the message out to the community that they can do uh pay a bill, do various services right here online. Any questions?
I think we're good. Thank you all very much. All right, moving on to public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in the meeting. Public comment is taking items listed on the agenda when they are called, but public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. And members of the public submitting written requests to speak at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting will be normally allotted five minutes to speak. Today, we do have one of those, Mr. Philip Binstock. Will be given five minutes to speak. If anybody else would care to speak, if you would kindly just queue up behind Phil to save some time. Welcome, Phil.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Philip Binstock. Um, I have five minutes. I'm told that brevity is a spice of wit, so let me see how brief and spicy I can be. Before I start on my issue, I want to thank the uh Uba City Police Department in my dealings with them and my observations of their activities out in the public, uh taking the uh Citizen Academy classes. I've got to tell you, everything has been textbook. I even got to see a felony stop. Very impressive. And I wanted to thank you for the fact that I've been here over ten years and my residence has been safe, I've been safe and thank you very much. Um, the issue I want to address is a quality of life issue. I'll give you some statistics about Uba City. About fourteen point seven square miles, twenty-four thousand housing units, averaging two point eight two people per unit. So within a two-mile radius, about twelve thousand, about twelve and a half square miles. Um, assuming that housing density around the fairgrounds is half over the rest of the uh the city, we'd be looking at about five thousand sixty-six households or fourteen thousand people in that area. The ordinance regarding noise at the fairgrounds states that there is no limit or regulation regarding noise for sport, patriotic, or religious events. On Cinco de Mayo, a Sunday, a work night, the noise and music blasted until about ten PM. During the fair that just ran August first through August fourth, Thursday through Sunday, the noise of the monster trucks, the announcements, and the music blasted as late as ten thirty in the evening. We have some issues, uh some events coming up like the Brews Blues and Barbecue. I've never been to one, so I don't know how loud that's going to be, but it's scheduled to go till ten PM. Um, there are other events coming up this year, so one of which is going to go as late as midnight. The point of the fairgrounds is not to blast a neighborhood until late at night. I would ask that either the ordinance be changed or that a uh personal agreement is reached with the uh managers of the fairgrounds. I'd like to see the noise stop at seven PM on work nights and eight PM on nights that are not work nights. I don't think it's fair to the neighbors of the fairgrounds to be blasted like that, unable to sleep. Literally, I mean, there was one day I didn't feel well. I could not take a nap. Windows closed, earplugs. Um, if I want to listen to uh television, I have to blast it. I don't think that that's the point of a um the fairgrounds. Now, I've heard the argument that the fairgrounds were established before many of the housing units, and that's true. They were established back in eighteen seventy-eight. However, that was well before the creation of these monster speakers and these monster trucks. So this is really just a quality of life issue, question of courtesy and consideration. I mean, I don't really think there's any reason to run monster trucks till ten in the evening. So a partial solution would be to uh replace the big, huge speakers that they have and they aim them outwards. It would make more sense to me to have smaller speakers and turn them around and face them inwards into the fairgrounds, not into the community. And then, of course, another one would simply be to set the limit of uh the time um that the noise goes on. Now, the hours I suggested, seven PM, eight PM, that's what I'd like. I mean, I realize that that may be obviously subject to discussion. I would ask that this be addressed. I'd like to be kept apprised of the progress and the eventual solutions. If there's any research that needs to be done into uh laws, ordinances, and so on, I did that in part for the state for twenty-five years. I'd be happy to do it. Spare the budget. I'll do it on my uh, on my dime. Uh, I mean, I love doing it. So tell me I've got, I mean, I have a minute? Great. So I have a minute of brevity and spice. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Phil. I have a question.
Sorry, one more thing. I'm sorry. I I don't feel particularly well, so otherwise I would stay.
We have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
The the fairgrounds is state property. In your research, has, have you discovered or found out whether or not we have any uh right to tell them what to do on their property?
We have an ordinance and that's uh Uba City Ordinance that limits the noise. I think the easiest thing we'd do would be to work with them.
I agree, but I just wondered if if in your, if in your contact with them, whether you would come across anything that would prohibit us from requiring them to lower the noise.
I have contacted them and um although I approached them in what I thought was a polite manner, uh was soundly rebuffed on, that's probably on three occasions. So, no, I don't, I don't.
I don't want you to take that I'm not interested in following. I just wondered if you had the information, that's all.
No, sir, I do not. I, if you'd like, I can start pursuing that and uh get back to you.
I, I think we can have staff do that, but certainly. The other thing I would mention to you, you talked about the Blues Brews and Barbecues. That's a civic club I'm a part of.
Yes, sir.
Four to eight PM.
Okay, because on the website it shows uh ten.
I just checked the website again to confirm just so I wouldn't.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Good. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil. Anybody else care to speak? All right. Move on to consent calendar. All matters listed on our consent calendar considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone from the public like to speak on any item on the consent calendar? All right. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Do the mayor?
Yes.
Like to uh approve this consent calendar item seven, eight, and nine.
All right.
Second.
Motion is second to approve all items on the consent calendar seven through nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? None. Very good. Onto number ten, general items, purchase of three Chevrolet Tahoe SUVs. Commander Brian Baker.
Good evening, uh mayor and members of the council. Before you tonight, we have a uh request to purchase uh three patrol vehicles for the police department. Two of the vehicles were included in the nineteen twenty uh budget process. One of those is a new K-nine vehicle for the K-nine position that was uh approved by the council and one was a replacement uh for uh uh older vehicle that was, we actually were able to repurpose to one of our school resource officers. The third vehicle we're looking to replace, uh that vehicle was totaled out as a result of a collision in November of two thousand eighteen. The Finance Department was able to diligently uh pursue the other insured and got the maximum uh limits of their policy, which was twenty-five thousand dollars to aid in replacement of that vehicle. As uh time goes on, everything that we purchase as uh individuals and as the city uh seems to go up at a, at a rapid rate. And so this year, there was uh a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars allocated to replace the, for the new K-nine car and to replace uh the car we repurposed. However, um some of that equipment had to stay and there was some funds that weren't included. And so we need also a supplemental budget appropriation to replace uh that car that was repurposed. For the replacement of the vehicle that was totaled, uh there wasn't enough money in the vehicle replacement fund for that specific unit. And so with uh moving some things around from some other vehicles uh that that don't need to be replaced at this immediate time, we were able to uh find the necessary funds. So there's a, in the staff report, I included a, a little bit of a cost breakdown for vehicle. Um, the replacement for the totaled vehicle is about fifty-six thousand dollars. Uh, the replacement for the repurposed vehicle is about seventy-seven thousand dollars. And a new K-nine car is about seventy-three thousand dollars. To compound matters in this issue, uh we were notified by Chevrolet um that the twenty twenty-one vehicles are going to be redesigned. And so as a result of that, the plant's shutting down and they're not taking any further orders uh for the twenty twenty vehicles after the end of September, first part of October, or if they meet their quota for the twenty twenties. So it is the uh request to staff that we uh do things a little bit different. Um, and recommendation A uh to use the formal bid process to hopefully get that opened up with council's approval in the next couple of days. And then after that, allowing the city manager to award the contract to the lowest bidder without coming back to council um a second time, basically. So it is staff's recommendation that uh council approve uh recommendations A through E. Recommendations A through E, and that'll get us the three vehicles and all the associated equipment to equip a patrol vehicle. At this time, we'll entertain any questions.
Through the mayor, the I read the staff report, the material. Items, the equipment items that were on the the total vehicle, et cetera, are those able to be used in the new vehicles? And if not, is there a market for them, so we get some value, or do they just get tossed?
We we did. We were able to reuse. The. The radio, which saves us about forty-one hundred dollars. And the computer, which saves us about ninety-five hundred dollars. The reason we can't reuse everything, because it's going from the Ford to the Chevy, so. Like the light bar is reusable as well, so we save a little bit of equipment there, but as far as like the cage. Backseats, all that has to be a new equipment, because it's a completely new vehicle.
Excellent that you can reuse. Is there a market to sell it to some other agency, the other stuff at all, or do you just? I'm just curious.
We basically still have some of those in the fleet, so our fleet maintenance folks are really good about kind of having a boneyard for cars, and so. Unfortunately, we drive a lot, and so. On the off chance we get into a little fender bender or something, they're pretty good about robbing parts from different places to save money where we can.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Commander, one thing you said going forward, they're doing a total redesign for the twenty twenty-one?
Yes, that's what we've been told.
Okay, and I know that going back in history here, we changed from the Ford to the Tahoe. And we've reengineered things there. Do we know how that's going to affect us long term? Is it basically cosmetics of how they're redesigning it, or are we looking at being in an issue of where we're gonna have incompatible parts in three or four years?
I I do not have that answer because they haven't they haven't released what they're gonna look like that we've seen. Typically, they they try and change, usually in my experience, they change the exterior, but a lot of the interior, the expensive stuff. Kind of stays the same. For a longer period of time than the external stuff. So we might have to redesign graphics a little bit just based upon fenders or different shapes, so they won't fit in a particular spot. But the inside expensive equipment, usually we can get a long service life of, but. Radios, we have radios in the vehicles now that are ten or twelve years old.
Okay, just curiosity, wanting to know how what was gonna be faced with in the years to come, so thank you.
All right, with nothing more, we can have a motion?
I motion.
I'm sorry, forgive me. Would anyone on the public care to speak on this item? Okay, now go.
Okay, thank you. I make the motion to accept the recommendations of A, B, C, D, and E.
Motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? None. Thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you.
Moving on to number eleven, agreements for acquisition of real property with Eagle Molding Company, number one, and Harder Packing Company. Ben Moody. Welcome back.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So item I have before you, it's it's a nice item. Okay, so the picture says all the words there. So what I have before you is basically. Authorization for the city manager to enter into acquisition agreements for two pieces of property. That will be along the future Jefferson Avenue per our general plan. No batteries, I guess. There's a zoom in a little bit. So if you if you look down towards the southeast corner of the the triangle there with the dark black line. Where. We're basically Jefferson Avenue, it comes into the. Here we go. So the area we're looking at is right in here, and so this is the harder development, and this is Eagle Molding Company right here. And so what we have here is there's, right now, there's there's a disconnect between Jefferson Avenue here on the west. And the future Jefferson Jefferson Avenue on the east, and so. Staff has basically been working over the last couple of years to to push this project forward for to connect the bike lane. And then also be that connection to our future park in that area. And so with working with Eagle Molding and then also with Harder Packing Group. We've we finally got an appraisal set that's agreed on in in terms to do with. The acquisition and fee versus versus easement, and there's a lot of there's a lot of particulars with this particular property, because it was old railroad property. There's a Sutter County drainage ditch there, and then there's also PG and utilities and a lot of encumbered with a lot of easements, and so. So after those efforts, we've got to a point that we've pretty much settled on the agreements. With a caveat that we'd like to, Harder's just touched base with us today that they're they have a couple sticking points on the indemnification regarding. Some hazardous substance conditions that we think we could work through, and so with that. We're real close to basically moving forward to finalize those agreements and 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 buy that property. And so those two pieces of property. You got the Eagle Molding, it's about one point one four acres for sixty-three hundred, and Harder Packing. Zero point seven one acres for fifty-five hundred for a total of eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. And so with that, I'd like to get approval for items A and B. With the caveat here for compliance with material terms and conditions, substantial compliance with material terms. To give staff a little bit of wiggle room to finalize those terms for Harder. Without, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Through the mayor, Mr. Moody, what what are the hazardous materials concerns that concerns me?
Well, I definitely concerned us, and so so we we paid a consultant to do a phase one environmental assessment to look into it. Because when Harder originally started developing to the east with the Wal Walmart or with the development to the east at Home Depot. There were some arsenic and different items that were removed and hauled off, and so we paid a consultant to go through there. And he basically deemed conclusion after that assessment that there is. No evidence of. Recognized environmental. There in issues, and concluded that there's no additional environmental assessment that is needed. So so with that, and so now there's a little bit of terms as far as how long. Because typically typically the city, when we have an area that's might have environmental issues, we get it in easement instead of getting a fee. And both of these property owners want to give it in fee, so they exclude all future issues with that, and so. So as we've changed those agreements to basically say, hey, we're only taking it in easement and. All liability is on the property owner. We're working backwards to. To basically satisfy them and satisfy us.
Through the mayor, so staff's opinion is is that with the study that was completed, you're you're satisfied that. There aren't any lingering nasty stuff in there that that would come back to haunt us.
With the phase one done and and the thorough record search and the cleanup that was done previously with the ditch in there, yes.
Thank you.
Very good.
Through the mayor, Ben, I'm reading the report in the environmental section of it. It's stating that, you know, the SEQA assessment. That in that portion, there was nothing else needed in that requirement. So can you clarify? I'm confused between the two, what you were just speaking in this other report.
So for this environmental portion of the staff report, particularly taught it's in regards to purchasing property, that the project of purchasing property. And then moving forward with a future bike lane project, and so the bike. So this area has had an environmental analysis done in in multiple ways, through the original general plan process where that road was. It was. Was looked at to basically be a through road for Jefferson Avenue, and then it was also looked at environmentally for when we applied for the park. Grant that we we got to the east, and and then also we'll go through a NEPA process to finalize it when we do the. We'll we'll finalize any lingering environmental issues associated with the bike lane project at that time. I don't know, that's a long story, but basically this particular environmental has to do with the purchase of the property, not with the construction.
Construction of the, okay, so that's clear to me.
If I said that right, I'm looking at the attorney if I misspoke.
I think I got it. It's clear as mud. Yeah, I'm good.
Anybody from the public care to comment? All right, we can entertain a motion.
Go ahead.
All right. To the mayor. Just I'd like to make a motion, staff's recommendation of agreement, the acquisition of real. Real property of Eagle Molding Company number one and Harder Packing LLC, recommendations A and B.
Second.
All right, first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? None. Very good.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would you mind if we had Mr. Moody stand up there for just one more second? I wanted to take a moment to thank you. I don't know if you're gonna be heading out of here, but thank you for stepping up and doing what you did during the interim period as well. Through the Public Works Department and your efforts and your patience with a new council and lots of questions too, so I just wanted to let you know. I appreciate it.
Very much appreciate it, and the support from Dan and the staff has made it happen, so thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
All right, now we'll move on to number twelve. Yuba Sutter Lodging Association.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Tara Locke. I'm the assistant to the city manager. And I'd like to introduce Jacob Young. He's the current president of the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association. So back in June, you asked the Lodging Association to come back. And talk about their their current budget and their needs for or the request. For additional funding from our. Motel hotel surcharge. So. The Yuba Sutter Lodging Association assesses themselves a two percent surcharge on their guest stays. This is in addition to the ten percent motel hotel surcharge that Yuba City receives. The Yuba Sutter Lodging Association is requesting a portion of the surcharge that is received by Yuba City. To further reinvest in the tourism marketing campaign. So up here, we have some of a list of some of their accomplishments that were listed in the staff report. So they also gave us a breakdown of some of the the things that they could do with the different dollar amounts. So for twenty-five thousand dollars, they can continue what they have been doing. And then it kind of goes up with the different dollar amounts to addition. What they can add further to the marketing and tourism program. And then it kind of goes all the way up to a total. Of at a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which would be ten percent of our total. Receipts for our motel hotel surcharge. So at this time, I'd like to ask. Mr. Young to come up.
Council members, good evening. And I know in concluding the staff report was some of the different allocations. Last time we're here, it was requested, one, to go back to the different jurisdictions. The city of Yuba City had concerns being the only jurisdiction supporting this effort financially. So we've gone before the different jurisdictions, progress has been made. Yuba County has dedicated fifteen thousand dollars, which comes out to about fifteen percent. Of their T O T fund. We've been continuing to work with Sutter County, with Administrator Smith and the administrative analysis analyst out there as well. To continue to work on what their contribution amount will be, and we don't have a firm amount from them yet, but we've had continual conversations. Up to this point, and we should hopefully get that finalized here within this next month. We've also have a meeting set up with the city manager of the city of Marysville, Marty Brown, this next week as well. She was out on vacation. So with the timing, she wanted to set it up once she returned from vacation to continue that discussion with the city of Marysville as well, so I'll be having that discussion with her. And I know we have a meeting scheduled with Audrey Taylor, who's working on the economic development plan for the city as well. So I'll be talking with her, actually tomorrow, to discuss the Y S L A and. How that benefits the economic development, especially if we're looking at long term for the city on the most found. Foundation moving forward, and so I know we asked one for the jurisdictional, the second with a little bit more of a marketing plan, what are we gonna do? With any funds that are allocated. I know since the initial request was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, which was ten percent of the T O T fund. We've now known that five percent of that has been allocated to different initiatives that have been brought before council as well, so we reduced that down to the sixty-three thousand. Which is, you know, now the five percent ask from that as well, so obviously these would kind of shift these numbers that were presented before. I mean, just wanted to kind of show what the different initiatives are that we're moving forward with. And you know, part of that kind of just, you know, highlighting the different elements of that, obviously twenty-five thousand, what we is what we are currently budgeting, we're gonna continue to budget that, whether or not. The city decides to add additional funds, but we just wanted to showcase how much we're currently allocating towards that and what we would do with additional funds going forward. But with that, I know we've talked about what Y S L A is, what our initiatives are, and I'd love to open it up for council questions from the council.
The on those slides there, are these all things that you're planning on doing anyway, or things you cannot do without our buy-in here?
So after the twenty-five thousand dollar slide, the each additional slide would get to where it would either. Fund efforts that aren't going to be currently able to be funded with our current allocations, or expedite that process of something that might be. More of a five, ten, or longer term project that we'd have to build up capital for, and especially when it gets down to the bigger items like. Kiosk and signage, things that we want to continue to enhance, especially taking advantage of people passing through the areas who want to come and stay in the area. But that would take more time and effort, one with different organizations, but also with the different funding for that as well.
Through the mayor, thank you for being here tonight. Having a little familiarity with marketing, how how are we going to determine our our return on our investment? You're asking for a sizable amount of money. I'm looking at the fifty thousand budget slide up there right now. I'm not exactly sure what a rustic wedding campaign is. I don't know which guides you're gonna be producing, and and the videos you've done so far, I think are great. But I'm trying to figure out, at the end of the day, how do we answer the citizens of this community? As to how effectively we spent the money that we've we would be allocating to you?
Yeah, definitely a valid question. That's what all the lodgers are asking the marketing company too. How do we justify this when we go back before the lodgers and say, here's what we've done? How do we show that there's been progress? So obviously, part of that is, you know, unmeasurable just due to the exposure that you receive. But the measurement that we're using is to see our progress of success is that T O T fund, because that is based off of taxation on overnight stays. So as we see T O T increase, part of that would mean that these efforts are seeing that return on investment of more visitors coming to our area, us paying that tax.
I realize, and and thank you for the answer, I realize that that you've been able to get some some funding from Yuba County. How close are you to finding out what Sutter County and or Marysville are actually gonna give to this effort?
Yeah, I was hoping to have had the answer from Sutter County before tonight, just so we could have a little bit more of that robust regional answer for you. So I'm hoping within this next month, I know it's been continuing to get progress, but they haven't determined that final amount. I know it's been discussed. Any different amounts throughout that, but they haven't given a even kind of tentative number on that yet, but we should know here within the closing of this month.
In your opinion, is is Hard Rock gonna to come in into the fold and and also support this effort?
They haven't written anything on that yet, but they are very supportive of the effort right now on our initial conversations before they get their doors open in November. They don't want to convince anything until doors are open and customers are coming, but it sounds like we'll be going back in November after they've opened their doors. To continue that conversation, but with the management that's there, they're very supportive. They see the mutual benefit of them being a part of this effort as well. So it looks like they will most likely be doing that by the beginning of this next year, after they've had some time to meet payroll, get the ball rolling with their business. And then they will, you know, talk to us about joining the Y S L A and that two percent going from there as well.
So here here's a here's the the toughest question probably is, what's the minimum you need from us?
Well, I mean, obviously, from you from you, the more that you give, the more that we're able to put to use. So I mean, minimum, I mean, that's, I'm not gonna say we need X amount, just because that is more up to you to determine with your budget, how much you, you know. Want to invest in this effort, basically, or contribute alongside of, so whether that's zero or six sixty-three thousand would be pretty great, but obviously anywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. I have a question. My question is in the fifteen thousand that Yuba County. Committed, what did you commit to Yuba County within that fifteen thousand dollar budget?
Yeah, so we're gonna come back before them at their at the springtime as they are coming on the tail end of their fiscal year. Similar what we do here on an annual basis with our plan, but to let them. Similar what we do here on an annual basis with our plan, but to let them know specifically how their fifteen thousand dollars were allocated. And what that was used towards specifically. And so that is what they agreed to of funding this effort. They didn't, you know, say, you know, like, here's what we agreed to with this in place. But they agreed to give that fifteen percent with us coming back before them to let us know how that was utilized at the spring, at the close of the fiscal year. As to make that determination for future contributions.
So the fifteen thousand was not dictated in any way. They just committed to the fifteen thousand. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Correct, just to continue to enhance the marketing plan that's there to move forward these similar initiatives that you're seeing before you tonight.
Oh, fantastic. Okay. Have you looked at the potential revenue from Hard Rock? If that was the case, are you looking at that two percent with them, or what's the conversation?
That's in order to be a part of the association to receive, you know, what the other lodgers putting into it would be that two percent. And they'll be one of the biggest lodgers in our region as far as beds are concerned. And so I don't know as far as figures, you know, based off of their occupancy yet, but yeah, that will definitely be what we're moving forward to getting them a part. Of having a voice in this regional marketing effort, but at the same time contributing to as well.
Okay, within this fiscal year, you have projections of how much of that two percent. The the group or the partner or the lodging partners are potentially going to earn. There's a budget number there, correct? Do you know that number amount?
Yeah, we're budgeting off of a three hundred thousand dollar budget for this fiscal year.
So within that three hundred thousand budget that you have in place, what is it that you're utilizing that budget? What are you losing utilizing that money for?
Yeah, so a big part of that was so far has been to get the website launched, to get the brand moving forward. And starting right now, moving forward, continue to get a visitor's guide in place for this upcoming year. We have social media presence and digital presence, meaning through Google and different platforms. We're targeting the Bay Area market for a lot of people who want to come and get a, you know, semi-local, but far enough away. Trips to get out of the city and into more of our region. The most successful campaigns so far have been in the hunting campaigns. And also birding and fishing. So a lot more of that outdoor recreational component that you can't really get in the Bay Area or the metropolitan area.
So my question to you, if you go back, can you go to the slides of fifteen thousand, I think what fif- fifteen, or is it twenty-five is the minimum? Twenty-five, you're asking for digital advertising and branding awareness. Go to the next one, please. Fifty thousand produced external branding. So are have you not already produced external branding awareness? Based on the videos that you have in place? And have you utilized the three hundred thousand to establish those? Those are my questions.
Yeah, so the we have the continuation and we have a monthly budget of twenty-five thousand to continue to push forward. Different initiatives, including like the rustic wedding campaign with that idea being, you know, reaching out to the Bay Area as well as even Sacramento and then more local, but starting with that Bay Area market. For people and brides looking to do different weddings to come to have that rustic experience, you know, barnyard type wedding. Which Yuba Sutter areas has a lot of those venues set up to do that. But with additional funding, that's why I said twenty-five thousand, we're going to continue to do that. It just kind of continued to amplify that. But to produce additional videos, a lot of people wanted to see specific videos on different markets like hunting or fishing. So instead of like a big, you know, two minute overarching video to focus on specific segments to put that into, you know, bigger publications or bigger segmented. Marketing campaigns on those specific items.
Well, as as everything that we do in the city, you know, we have to be very transparent and clear how we utilize public funds because this is. Our job to make sure. And so I guess my question to you is with the three hundred thousand that you already have in place for nineteen twenty. Are you able to accomplish all those things that you've already listed in your budget with that three hundred thousand dollar existing budget? Because I I'm not clearly hearing the need for additional funds in my perspective. Based on what you're telling me and the information that I have. Is that a fair statement, or am I presuming this in the wrong direction?
That's good, semi semi fair. I mean, because a part of that would be to continue to build off of what's there to get additional exposure. Once we get in.
Does three hundred thousand dollars enough for you to do what you need to do?
Yes, that's what we build our budget off of, our game plan off of, because you can't build a plan off of money we don't have essentially if we are to see.
Correct. So you could still function without us contributing additional funds to you?
Oh, correct, yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor, thanks for being here again tonight. Thanks for being here again tonight. I know that we sent you back to ask for all the other jurisdictions and to bring us more of a plan. I think my fellow council member got to the root of the question we're all trying to drive to, and that's. This is an investment for all the municipalities. And ROI right now. The mechanism you're talking about, just seeing that number go up, really doesn't drive it because quite honestly, the number's going to go up as soon as Hard Rock opens. Because there's approximately, is it three hundred rooms they're going to have out there, I believe, or?
Correct, but they are sovereign.
Okay, hundred and seventy.
And they're they're a sovereign land, so they actually don't pay into that tax figure at all.
Okay, but as far as the tourism revenue going into stays in the hotels, if you'll be able to track that. What's going to be the telltale when we look across the demographics of Yuba City, Marysville, and the two counties? To see if all of a sudden our numbers go down. And basically we just have transplants out at the Hard Rock because they're staying there versus staying at hotels within our cities and municipalities. You also stated, and and I agree with my fellow council members, that when you were here the very first time, you said the budget was built, you could accomplish everything. Without another dime at this point. Going through the slides, you know, you you just hit on it, the biggest opportunity we have is with sports. As far as hunting, fishing, things of that nature, nature, our river here. And but yet through these. I see more now rustic weddings and things of that nature than what was targeted as our major asset, which is the natural resources. I really think a year from now, we'll be able to have a more solid foundation. Things that I'm more interested in is what are we talking about with external brand awareness? You know, the specific regional assets and for the informational guides. Because we can spend fifty thousand dollars and reach no one. I get advertisements all the time for my business going, you know, advertise your service, you know, on the magazines, it's on the airplane. So the last thing somebody wants to do when they're on the airplane is figure out, hey, I want this type of service or I want to buy a tractor, no pun intended. But, but you know, we got it, to me, I need to know more about what. Where are we actually targeting? How is our ROI going to be calculated? We've got to get the hotels that are part of this to really track. You know, where people are coming from. Are we having regional people come? Are we coming from across the nation? You know, what what are those percentages? Numbers start telling us things. Right now I see a lot of great concepts. But is it worth spending an extra fifty thousand dollars right now on a concept? We could just be throwing, you know, darts against the wall right now. Where do we hit? I'd like to see it more developed. Almost be laser focused on what your plan is going to be. Because ultimately, we want to see the return on investment, which is more people coming to our area, more people staying in our hotels. And, you know, with with the resources, my opinion is we could probably do more within our city to help you. By reallocating like we've done with others with a homeless homeless officer and things of that nature. To help our community be more presentable to people that are coming to our city to to be here. Let's take the fishing, for example. If someone comes here to fish, they're going to go right down the river and it's going to be homeless camp after homeless camp after homeless camp. That's not really attracted to someone that wants to get out of the city and go have a quiet time fishing. So my opinion is I think we could do you more good on a different front. And then we can reevaluate this in about a year once Hard Rock is open and we really see what that impact's going to be to our community. So just my thoughts.
Thanks for your insights.
I'm Cindy, the new Tourism Coordinator for Visit Yuba Sutter. I just wanted to point out one couple of things that with some of our money where the presenting, helping the Chamber of Commerce. We're the presenting sponsor for the Swamp Festival, which is helping a lot of people. With the demographics, we can track where the clicks are coming from. So a lot of them are coming from San Francisco, from the Bay Area. Which and it just doesn't help the hotels, it also helps the local businesses, your restaurants. Also the fishing guides and all that type. I do agree that we do need the homeless cleaned up. But we all need to kind of, you know, there's a little bit more that we are bringing here. And our homeless is bad, but go to Sacramento. I mean, that's real bad. So, you know, I agree that it's bad, but we are doing extra stuff with the money to get people here. So anyway. Just wanted to put that out there.
The only comment I have is is the Hard Rock, we're hoping that they contribute to tourism. They don't have to. They don't have to give a dime. They're the tribe. We're hoping that they do. They say they're going to help, but how much are they going to help? Yuba County gave a fifteen thousand dollar, you know, donation to to help these folks. And that's standing, that's before the Hard Rock has even opened the doors. They have given, that was what, ten percent, fifteen percent?
Yeah, there's fifteen percent of their.
That was fifteen percent. The Sutter County is it's on it's on their agenda for the next meeting, I believe. Well, no one knows how much it's going to be. And it it does help, you know, it's like Cindy said, it's not just hotels, it's going to help our restaurants in our community. And and so on and so forth. I know we have we have a budget, it's a tight situation and stuff like that, and. These folks are doing a great thing for the community. Not just, you know, for the hotels, but for all the businesses in our community. They're doing a great thing. And myself personally, I'd like to help them for what we can do, and I'd like to make a motion or recommendation. That we we don't need to wait for Sutter County or Marysville or whatever, because Marysville has their, they only have one hotel in the community itself. And Sutter and in Sutter County, we don't know. But I don't think we we don't need to make these folks wait. They did what they were asked to do. They tried and the people didn't come through for them. But I'd like to give them a little something. I'd like to make a recommendation of twenty-five thousand dollars to help with tourism.
That's it. Anybody from the public here to comment? No. All right, thank you very much for the recommendation. Just real quick, I I can appreciate especially what you said, Cindy. And you are recognizing something we're dealing with up here is more than just heads and beds. It's the entire community and not just Yuba City, but the entire Yuba Sutter community that we want to try to benefit. That's our perspective, right? So I I do appreciate that, a recognition of that. We have to keep that in mind, the the bigger picture. One question I have for you, Jacob, or interview is is ag tourism perhaps on your radar anywhere at all?
Definitely, especially as we have different tours that we set up. The ag is a big indicator of that, especially, I mean, agriculture in general is such a big industry. But even between wine tours, you know, promoting the different wineries in our region and different crops that we have. Even Peach Festival, but also just the agricultural event itself, we definitely have different tours and different programs set up for that.
All right, I guess we'd have to get other private partners. I'm thinking Bishop's, I'm thinking Apple Hill, things like that. Cindy, yes?
No, 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 it's true, yeah.
As the new Tourism Coordinator, I've cut, one of my things is I'm supposed to do is to come up with events, itineraries. I've just heard, and I'm not, might be speaking out of context, but Highway ninety-nine corridor is supposed to be named the Farm to Fork. Corridor partially, you know, of our county by Gallagher. He's put something through and it's going to get done. One of my hopes, and I'm already starting to work with some different farmers, is to have Farm to Fork series. And have it at each and every type like Stevens for peaches, watermelons. Have something at every single crop that we grow. We'll have something walnuts, featuring walnuts. We'll have something in almonds. Featuring almonds, walnut, prunes, you know, we have sun sweet, the largest. I want to, that's one of my goals. And I've already been working with people to get that in the process, but with the late in the season. I have to realize, you know, I've got to slow down and it's realities next year on that. So that is in the works when you ask about the, you know, taking advantage of our farm. Yeah, that's one of our big issues. And I don't know if you guys have taken some time just to look at the Visit Yuba Sutter website, visityubasutter.com. It is a pretty cool website with different stuff on there to do. We have wineries, do wine tours, and we're giving people ideas also. Not just say, here, we have this, we have that, given on an itinerary. So that, hey, yeah, I can go have wine, but then spend the night and the next day go on a hike or go to Gray Lodge, something like that. Something to do within our community. So anyway, that's kind of what we're working on too.
So you're saying, which I'm happy to hear also, is that you want to create more of an experience around the crops versus just somewhere to come buy some?
What we're doing is rebranding the area. That's that's what our goal is. That's we're rebranding. We're going to be the coolest, hippest place to come to. Everybody's going to want to come. I mean, I have some even more ideas, but I got to run through them first. So, but yeah, we got a lot of plans going on. More than that I've just we've discussed tonight.
All right, I also understand, I'm sure we all do, the the complexity or difficulty it is to put something like this. Because you, like Jacob said, you you can't really plan for money you don't have. So the more, you can use a million, I bet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I bet you could. So it's hard to it's hard to quantify, but we need that.
Yeah.
For example, that word up there, specific regional assets, I would have loved to know what the specific regional assets worthy you had in mind. For, you know what I mean? On the on the slide there. So just little things like that. But I'm happy to hear the extra information you're giving. It looks like I'm about to get more info here in a minute.
Okay, okay. Well, it is in the Y S, the Y L S A funding allocation breakdown. For Restaurant Guide, Winery Guide, Hiking Trail Guide, et cetera, to spread awareness to tourists. So, yeah.
And now, I'll, like, I can go on and on, but I get it. So thank you very much for the presentation, for being here. This is. It is an action item, so I will entertain more comment or emotion. Or not.
I guess I have one more question.
Yes.
The slides show a variety of different requested amounts, but the requested amount in the staff report doesn't seem to match up to any of the requested amounts. What what's the sixty-three, seven thirty? Was that just a percentage of the T O T?
Yeah, after we had come through this amount, I mean, we had found out that the ten percent original ask, five percent of that has already been allocated to other initiatives approved by the council. So this was the original hundred and twenty-seven. We had understood that part of that had already been relocated. And so that's why we reduced that down, which doesn't match these amounts from when this was put in to to now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to try it again. I'd like to make style, I'd like to make a recommendation.
Motion.
A motion. I'd like to make a motion, see how this works out for them, and they'll come back again next year. Like I make a motion to give the they give the Lodge Association twenty-five thousand dollars.
May I have a motion, maybe a second on that? Nope. I will second that. I think our friends across the river. They're they've got some skin in the game. I don't I don't see a problem with us throwing some in as well. Although I I definitely understand and appreciate the differing opinions, but I would recommend, I will second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
So, motion fails, but thank you for coming. We'll keep on going at it, okay? Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Moving on to number thirteen, Galshe Aquatic Park, presented by Brad McIntyre.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. At the last council meeting, August twentieth, you asked staff and frac to come back. Can you, okay? You've asked staff to come back with frac and give you some updates. The first one is what Ms. Anna Gillon, our Recreation Aquatic Supervisor, will present here in a minute. And that was to come up with a recreation program that allow frac to utilize the pool on a temporary basis if needed. Update council regarding a meeting with frac. Have asked frac to provide an update on their five oh one C three and ask frac to provide information on the possibility of. Different competitive team providing insurance, or as it's called sometimes, a satellite team. And then last but not least, we will have our city attorney give an update. Uh and then last but not least, we will have our city attorney give an update on the insurance issues. So I wanna hand it over to now to Ann Gillan and she will walk you through two options uh as relates to a recreation program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um so at the last meeting, I was asked to come back with an update on what it would look like. If the Recreation Department was to run a competitive swim program out of the gap. Um. Since then, I've been able to meet with Sharon Guillory from frac, who is president of our um. The swim, the competitive swim team that utilizes gap right now. And after getting information from her, I was able to put together um two options for um. Us running a competitive swim team. Um option one would be the frac participant fees would remain the same. So for um expenditures, the only expenditures that we would have would be for coaches and lifeguards. Um the particip- participants would um supply their own um equipment. Um they would pay for their own U S um A swimming fees. So the only thing we would have would be lifeguards and the coaches. And um so it would be for practices and the meets. Um the total expenditures with the wages and Medicare and workers' comp and everything would be thirty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So the revenues um remaining the same, uh seventy or seventy-five dollars. Our total revenues would be fifty-one thousand six hundred. Our past annual revenue from um. Frac utilizing the pool, their rent, a monthly rent came out to thirty-one thousand eight hundred. So if you took the fifty-one thousand six hundred. The projected revenue and took um minus our projected projected expenses, we would have a nineteen thousand. Twenty-three revenue, but it would actually be an additional twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven negative revenue. Cause we would not be covering that thirty-one thousand eight hundred that we get from them annually. Option two would be for the frac participant fees to increase and it would be an eighteen dollar a month. Increase per per participant. So instead of the younger swimmers, the seventy dollars would go to eighty-eight. And the seventy-five would increase to ninety-three. Um the expenditures would not change. Um it would be the same for either option. So the total expenditures would be the same and then our revenues would be sixty-four thousand five hundred and sixty. The past annual revenue was thirty-one thousand eight hundred. So if you did the revenue minus expenses, we would be thirty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-three. And that's it. Those are the two options. So it would be either remain the same or we'd have to increase the fees.
So council, we'll come back to this question um as we get, there's there's some decisions we'll we'll need as far as what your desire is for us to do. Uh regarding option one or option two, as far as fees.
Brad, would you mind going back and just explaining the other, where the red comes from on the previous slide?
So the.
Right there.
Right there. So when uh with our contract with frac, uh addition, the revenue from the contract. For the year totaled thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. And so if we run the program as in option one. Is that uh the city would only be covering uh not all the um revenue that we've made from the past. And so that we would add the negative annual revenue, meaning that if you take the thirty-one thousand eight hundred minus the nineteen thousand, you you give a. A a deficit or in the whole, if you will, of a twelve, twelve thousand seven hundred. So so it's either, if you keep the 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 same, the fee is the same for frac. Then we're going to lose revenue as we compare to the past as it relates to this topic. If we go with option two, you raise the fees for frac. And your revenue then comes out to thirty-one thousand nine eighty-three. So it's really, do you wanna subsidize option one or do you not wanna subsidize option two?
So we could technically even raise it half of the amount recommended and get that more to neutral? If we do, if we raise the fees less?
If you raise the fees less, you will, you will not meet that thirty-one thousand eight hundred. And if that's what council's desire is, that's certainly not a problem.
Past annual revenue is what frac was paying?
Yeah, their contract of the two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars per month.
But if we keep the fees raised as recommended, we're gonna make thirty-two grand?
We're going to ma- if we, if we keep the fees the same. We will not make thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. We will. Make nineteen thousand twenty-three dollars.
I gotcha.
As far as the net.
So we're taking in nineteen instead of thirty-one is what you're saying there?
Yes.
And the other one is pretty much even?
Yes.
Gotcha. Alright, thank you.
So on the the second follow-up, as far as um uh directing staff, as Ann alluded to, we talked with uh frac. Um and Sharon specifically. Uh at the time, um and up and they're here, so they can certainly talk to it, but I don't believe they have a full board. Um I believe they have two board members, possibly three, if I understand it correctly. Um and then we can certainly ask frac to come up and give a report as well.
Would be happy to hear from you if you're inclined. More information, the better sometimes.
Good evening. I feel like I'm becoming a regular around here. Um what exactly would you like to hear from me?
Well, anything you have to say relevant to frac and this topic and.
Okay.
Just your your input.
In regards to the topic that was just given to you. Um Holly, my vice president, our head coaches, um we have not had the opportunity to sit down with. Brad and Ann or e- even to discuss this option. And then I was also hoping that tonight, if um. After maybe hearing from your city attorney on what his views are on our insurance, because I worked really hard to try to. Um get the updated insurance information that you guys asked for the last time we met. Um I went home that night and I actually looked up what time it was in Ohio, because. I knew the next morning, if I got up at five-thirty, started making calls at six o'clock, somebody would be able to answer my questions and those are where our insurance agents are. Um I don't want to speak out of turn or say something that isn't accurate. I do believe um I've given. Adequate information that our insurance is valid, no matter what our tax status is, you can refer to the city attorney on that, because I. I don't wanna say something that isn't correct, but it would be my hope that we would be allowed to consider. To continue running our program the way that we have, um even though we haven't had a contract since two thousand seventeen. We've still been paying that thirty-one thousand to the city. We've been paying into the city literally for decades and I would ask for. Um just some compassion with that to allow us to keep doing what we're doing as long as the city is an additional insured. While we're trying to work through the paperwork issues, which I assure you, we are. Working very hard on that one. I'm learning uh more than I've learned in my lifetime about taxes. Um not something that I wanted to learn. I'm not a tax person, but. Um I'm certainly doing everything that I can to um correct mistakes that have been. Made over the past few years. So it it would be my hope that we would be allowed to continue running the way we're running, paying the rate that we've been paying for. Um eh to gap even without a running contract. We have lots of programs that come into gap with no contract whatsoever. Groups that will come in and pay a fee. They'll make a, you know, they'll speak with Ann and say, hey, I have a group of people that wanna come and swim. And they make an agreement and then they go. And for me, if it has to be month to month until we get um our status cleared, if it has to be. Um I don't know, I'm just, I I can't speak for Holly, our coaches, our other people. I don't wanna do that. But myself personally, I would much prefer that we're continued to operate as is. The city doesn't lose any money that way. We still are allowed to do what we do and the city is um insured, which was what the big concern was. Uh the last time that we met.
Alright, thank you, Sharon. Before we get into the legal talk, I have a speaker card here, Mr. Eric Palmeroy, if you'd like to say something? Yes, you do.
So thank you, Mayor Harris and council members. Uh my name is Eric Palmeroy. Do I need to state my address as well? So really, I wanna uh begin by thanking and commending you for your efforts um. And your commitment and diligence to keep the pool open thus far and the conversation's going. Um I have two daughters, ages nine and twelve. Um who are products of both Yuba City Racquet Club Swim Program and frac and uh. The statements that we heard over the last two meetings um were right on point. The value of swimming goes far beyond the pool. And really, I would like to see that continue. Um I was excited about the momentum from the last couple of meetings and then when I saw the article in the paper about the. The issue with the five oh one C three status, I became a little concerned, cause I I really, you know, swimming is one of those things that's near and dear to me. Um and I don't wanna see it die in this community. So I'm really here tonight to offer my time. Um options, whatever I can do to help um collaborate with options. My my kids currently swim. Uh for C C A, California Capital Aquatics in Roseville. And I happened to look at my bank account while Sharon was talking about the fees. And I think I paid two hundred and seventy dollars or three hundred dollars for the kids, so it's really expensive. Um and really, I've been, over the last year, I've I've had a whole new perspective of swimming. I was a competitive swimmer, believe it or not. When I was much younger, much lighter. Um but also, I I helped coach. I've um. Had the chance to see my kids really grow and excel through swimming. And uh over the last year, as a parent for the California Capital Aquatics, I I gained a whole new, I guess, appreciation or perspective of swimming. Uh they have a big swim club, much bigger than than frac is, uh but they really make it happen down there as well. Um they have multiple rec teams going at the same time, water polo, masters. Um it's like a, like a, like a traffic jam there continuously. Um but I I think with those ideas, um really in having that perspective and knowledge, I can help reach out. Um to some of the partners that that I've made through swimming to to help this council. Maybe help facilitate um or lessen some of that that gap in funding that we're receiving as well as just other options and bringing those to the table. Um I brought Mr. Pete Backus, owner of Yuba City Racquet Club tonight, um as he is a committed community member as well. That's interested in helping and making sure this doesn't go away. So that's really my purpose here tonight, is just offering my time.
In what capacity or a a coach or or?
So any capacity that anyone needs, just to make sure the swim team does not go away or the pool to this gets close.
Got it. Alright, well, thank you very much.
Sure.
Alright.
Through the mayor, Eric.
Ma'am.
Don't leave yet, please. Eric and I go way back. Um Eric. So you were taking your daughters to frac and now you're taking your daughters to Roseville? Why the change of?
So so part of it is, we were planning at one point to relocate and I didn't want my daughters to give up on swimming. The other thing was. Giving them a fresh perspective. Um one of my daughters is is very competitive. Um and I wanted her to uh, let's just say, have a humbling experience of a bigger team. And so we tried it out. Um it's worked well. Um frac has also worked well with us over the time period that we were in frac, but. Um it's a commitment, a different level of commitment that we've endured.
Right. Now, one of the things if you're involved closely with a Roseville, is there an opportunity to have like a satellite team? You know, could you help? Um I I I don't know, I'm not broker, that kinda deal. Um to allow frac to have.
So I I was genuinely, again, worried about what I saw in the paper about the five oh one C three status. So. I did talk to um some folks down at C C A and again, it's it's a longer process than just saying, okay, I'll help. I I think in the swim community, certainly there's people that want to help and I think Sharon would concur with that. Um as well as Mr. Backus locally, um who who again, we see the value of swimming. So the answer wasn't a definitive no. Um it was certainly like, well, we need to know the specifics in order to to make a commitment or help in any way they could.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I appreciate your commitment to doing that. Thanks.
Anything else?
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, Mr. City Attorney, can we have an update on insurance statuses?
Certainly, council. We have a, just to keep it very short, the city has insurance. That does apply as long as the city lifeguard is used and then when we can get a contract, we can. Uh rely a little bit more on fracs. We don't have to use our lifeguards once we get a contract, but until we have a contract. Till we have a contract, we have to use li- city lifeguards and the city insurance. In addition to the city insurance, USA Swimming has recently confirmed that frac has insurance under USA Swimming. Even though frac is suspended, uh we do have uh documentation from USA Swimming that says. Uh sure, you may be sus- not in good standing with the state of California, but that doesn't affect your good standing with USA Swim. And that being the case, there is excess insurance through USA Swimming. And one thing to keep in mind is, I have up there on the on the presentation is frac's additional insurance coverage. May not completely protect the city until frac becomes active and can enter into a contract with the city. We're still in the process of determining exactly what that means. The reason is. Is we need to get endorsements and we're working through that to determine what, if any, and how that works. So for example, it may be just excess insurance. If it's just excess insurance, which based on the USA Swim team's site appears to be the case, that means the city's insurance applies first. And then once the city's insurance is no longer there, then USA Swim or frac's insurance will apply second. The other thing with that is what's called subrogation. That is, let's say frac were, I don't know, ninety percent liable and the city were ten percent liable from an instant. If the claim was made to the frac's insurance and they covered a hundred percent of the payment. They could turn around and then seek that ten percent from the city for its portion. So what we generally try to do is have a waiver of that in our agreements. Currently, right now, we can't enter into agreement because the frac is suspended with the state. So there is some question as to the depth of that insurance coverage from frac and we are in the process of looking at that.
If I, sorry, if I read correctly too, we are covered up to forty million?
That's correct.
Alright, so we're, the insurance through frac isn't even gonna kick in till we take a forty million dollar hit, God forbid.
That's correct.
Alright. Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor, I guess, I'm still trying to wrap my brain around. Frac does not have a contract with us, cause they can't have a contract with us. So how are the kids coming into gap and how are they paying? Which would provide some level of liability from the city.
That's a, that's a good question and maybe more of a question for Brad, how they're paying. But right now, the city doesn't have a contract with frac, so we don't have to provide them with the services under the old contract. So they, we could require them to pay current rates or whatever rates that are being charged to the public generally, if they wanted to have those lanes and be able to use them.
Again, going through, again, bear with me. Here comes the swimmers, who I think we all have agreed, we wanna try to keep in the pool. They show up at the gap, they're walking through the gate. In in theory, frac's footing the bill, but they can't. When when am I missing?
Well, as as it, as long as they step step foot on our property, whether or not they have frac insurance and no matter with, if they're paying or not paying. Our insurance will be covering that.
Fully.
Fully, up to forty million dollars.
We have all the liability right now.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also, just on top of that too, we would anyway.
Yes, up to forty million dollars.
Right, okay.
But that in, just not to muddy the issue, but that depends on what the endorsements say. So if it's just purely excess insurance, then we'd be in it for forty million dollars. If we're additional insured and it's not excess insurance, then they would be paying out first before it came to our insurance.
And we don't, we don't have the answer to that yet.
We're still in the process of looking that up.
Ev- everybody else who walks in the door, if they're not under the umbrella, if they're not wearing a frac outfit, they're general public, there's.
It's on us.
Business as usual anyway.
Yes.
So would it hurt anything? I mean, I, if if frac is not eh an entity, illegal entity anymore, yet, again. Um I mean, does it? I mean, does it, does it hurt anything if we, if we call them members of FRAC or in name only? Because we're, the insurance and the liability issues are still the same. The kids still get to, you know, swim and do their thing. But they also don't lose the continuity of being a member of FRAC. It's not, it doesn't go away and come back and confuse everybody.
That's correct. It doesn't hurt anything to call them FRAC members for the purposes of our insurance.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Through the mayor. Thank you.
Go.
So, if, if, if we, if FRAC had, had its 501(c)(3), had its insurance, then the process of that insurance would be through FRAC? If anything, liability not as first, primary? If it was done according to what the law and the agreements were?
Currently, the problem with insurance is it can get complicated very, very quickly. And it's a very messy sort of thing. And I don't like giving the "it depends" response.
Okay.
But it depends on what the policy terms are. And those policy terms tell us whether or not we need a valid contract in order to be fully covered or not. Those policy terms tell us whether or not it is excess insurance or primary insurance. So, we've, Sharon has worked very closely with us to attempt to get some of that information. Their insurance broker has some issues. We still need to run down those particular items. However, Sharon was kind enough to forward me some information from USA Swim itself. The USA Swim itself is talking about their insurance, not a primary document, but it's least indicative. And they called their insurance excess insurance. And if that's correct, as excess insurance, that would be in addition to the city's $40 million cap.
Right. And I get that. I get that part. You don't have to go through that again. But I'm just trying to get to the point about the valid contract and nonvalid contract. And because it's, because the 501(c)(3) is suspended at this moment, so, all the entire liability is on the city. There is no difference to that at this moment because of the suspended nonprofit, because the city does not have a contract with FRAC.
The, the city still has insurance with FRAC.
An insurance, but contract is different and agreement.
Yes. And that, that contract can give us additional coverage depending on what the policy terms are.
Correct. Okay. I got it. Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I don't want us to get confused on a lot of terms here. But, the nugget in this that starts unwinding it is when they were suspended by the Secretary of State. Because it's that point in time that basically null and voided everything as far as contractual law in the state of California. And Sharon, if you could answer a question for me real quick. And could you tell me, could you come to the podium, please, and answer this question? I would like her to come to the podium, please. Okay. Do you know what, when you were suspended by the Secretary of State?
When I was, I do not. I do know that Secretary of State, we did submit a new statement of information. It has been received. We received a letter back from Secretary of State saying that our entity will remain suspended until the California Franchise Board has issued a certificate of reviver. I have also filled out a franchise tax board, a 3557 BC form, which is an application for a certificate for a reviver of a corporation. I'm also working on a Form 3500, which is an exemption application. We have some Forms 199 that have to be submitted that we are very close to having that done. I believe the tax exempt status was revoked in June of 2017. And again, it's my understanding, we worked on a retroactive reinstatement for that and I had to do a reasonable cause statement explaining the circumstances behind how all of this happened. And we're looking all the way back to 2014. I have spent a lot of time feeling embarrassed and humiliated about this whole thing. But you know, the thing is, the thing about our club, one of the things that's so great about it is that it's run by parent volunteers. But another part that's not so great about it is that it's run by parent volunteers. We are not tax people. We are a tax exempt organization. We bring in what we give out and sometimes a little less than that. We're not a corporation that's making money. We don't pay taxes. We're tax exempt. Or we were, and that's what we're trying to work back towards. We also filled out a Form 1023, which is an application for recognition of exemption under Section 501(c)(3) of the IRS. So, I am doing everything that I can and taking the proper steps to correct mistakes that have been made before me, during me. Like I said, we're not tax people. And so, I've spent lots of hours and lots of time trying to figure this out and hunt down the proper paperwork and the things that we need to do to move forward. And I don't, I don't know, I would not be able to make any sort of decision before talking with my team, the coaches, the other board members. I, I've been very open with my team about everything that's going on because I think that's super important. I think, even looking back to how this whole thing started in the first place, one of the most important things to me is to be open with the people on my team and the kids that we are coaching. And I, do I have an answer for how long this is going to take? No, I don't. Am I doing everything I can to correct it as quickly as I can and correctly? It's a scary process, but I will tell you, if any of you think. I was really shocked because after our last meeting, I went home. And like I said, I got up, I started making calls, making calls, making calls. The IRS and the franchise tax board, I've always been told like, ooh, you really don't want to mess with those people. And I really don't think you want to mess with those people. But they've been very kind, very helpful and very compassionate with me and letting me know that this sort of thing happens all the time with organizations that are run by parent volunteers. And so, I guess I'm asking for a little leniency because I am working towards a solution and because I have been so diligent in trying to figure out the insurance. I mean, I, every day, I was contacting the city attorney with, hey, here's this email, here's this contact person, here's this person. He would come back with, well, that's not exactly what I'm looking for. So, I'm like, okay, then I'm going to try this. So, I tried the next person and then I would send that information to him all the way until I went to a gentleman by the name of George Ward. And George Ward, there is no one above George Ward when it comes to USA Swimming and Insurance. The same guy that's dealing with Michael Phelps and his, you know, whatever. I mean, now he's dealing with FRAC. But I went all the way to the top because I just wanted some clarification so that we would have that to bring back to you. I told the city attorney this evening, we talked about endorsements. I honestly have, I have no idea what endorsements those are or how to get them. I have given him everything that I possibly can so that that can be worked out. I've kind of stepped back from that process because there's nowhere higher for me to go. This gentleman's address is something like One Olympic Plaza. I mean, he's, you don't, you don't go above him. But, but I do appreciate everybody that I've been working with to try to fix the situation. Everybody has been fantastic. And, you know, from, from my perspective, what I can say about myself and other parents before me, this has all been solely lack of knowledge, lack of knowledge because we didn't know everything that we were supposed to be doing. And now, we're figuring it out and we will be putting something in place to avoid ever being in this situation again.
First of all, thank you for being upfront about it. And all the information that we're going to continue to talk about, just to, I mean, it's, it is public knowledge.
Right.
When I asked at the last meeting, you can pull up every bit of this in a matter of three minutes on the internet. And if you understand a couple of codes, you know just how severe the problem is. You know when the problem occurred. And because this is my area of expertise, I can tell you how long this process is going to take. Your 501(c)(3) occurred in May of 17, the revocation. So, did your suspension with Secretary of State.
Okay.
Your suspension with Secretary of State wasn't just for non-filing the statement of stockholders. It was failure to file tax returns.
For three consecutive years.
And it goes all the way back to about 2012 because all those tax returns are public knowledge and are out there on the internet. So, is a statement of stockholders in which you filed those previous.
I was told by IRS 2014.
Okay. It's, anyway, you can, you can look and see. But the process in this is all the previous years, it's not just filing a statement of stockholders, which you did. Filing for reviver of the corporation. You're going to have to go back and file tax returns. And since your nonprofit status was revoked, now you have to deal with regular corporate taxes and walk through this. Then, you've got to go through the 1023 process, which is basically recreating the nonprofit again, even though it will be the same nonprofit. I've done this process multiple times for organizations that have gotten themselves into issues like this. This process, the earliest that I've seen anyone do it is about seven months. Typically, it's almost two years.
Okay. That is not the information that I've been given. I will also tell you that I was told that the IRS would not impose the tax penalty if we were able to have things back retroactive to when it was first revoked. And I'm not up here to, I don't claim to be a tax person. I don't claim to know the ins and outs and all of that. And I really don't know that this platform is the place for this conversation. Like I say, I'm more than welcome, you're more than welcome to ask and I'll be as open with you as I can. But I don't have all of the answers. I can't tell you, this is going to be done on October 12th. I, I really don't know. All that I can tell you, me being upfront, is that I am going through the steps to repair it.
Right. No, and I appreciate that. And this is the platform for this conversation because what we're trying to get to as a council is really, where did our exposure start? How much longer can this exposure possibly continue? And how do we take next steps from here? Because at where it sits right now, the insurance liability layers itself up, whether we're additionally insured or it's excess insurance. Those are all key terms when you start understanding insurance to how that whole mechanism works. The problem that you have as well is you have kids that are part of a swim club that's kind of really not a swim club, but it is a swim club. So, when I look at this, it's kind of, you know, how do we limit our exposure from insurance? Does that mean we take it over and run it for an interim period? It could be a couple of years at the city level that was presented in one of the options. Do we continue assuming the risk that's going forward with insurance? Because if the kids do get hurt, then, you know, our insurance is frontline versus having us an additional insured to where USA would be first and then we would be second. That's the optimal point that we want. You know, things happen and, you know, it happens all the time. But it's not an easy fix. And that's what we have been told at the last meeting that we would have this fixed in a matter of, you know, very short period of time. The reality is, this is... Yes, ma'am. You, you said you would have it fixed in, the first one was a matter of a couple of weeks.
Just go ahead and continue.
And, yeah. So, the point I'm trying to make is this is not something that we're going to have an answer to from FTB, Secretary of State or Treasury within the next three to four months. So, we need to take whatever actions there are during the interim of protecting the city so that we don't put the assets of the city and our insurance at further risk down the line. If they're able to correct it in a matter of a few months or a few weeks, all the better. You know, I'm not saying that this whole idea is dead. I'm just saying, we've got to do something to fill this gap to make sure that we're protected as a city because we have an obligation to our residents.
Yeah, and I appreciate the update today because we were forewarned ahead of time that you would not have all the answers. But we came in just as a status check, which I appreciate. Was not expected to have a final say-so. The frustrating part you must be dealing with, and I know we are too, is you can't even call up your insurance company and find out if it's excess or not.
Correct.
One way to find out is go ahead and file a claim. You'll find out real quick.
Yeah.
Which is, which is frustrating, you know, I can only imagine. Did you have something to say real quick?
I do. If I could clarify, and I got this information directly from George Ward because I was concerned about, a swim club does not have to be a 501(c)(3). A swim club does not have to be a corporation. That was made very clear to me. A swim club, which FRAC very much still is, you can have one registered USA swim coach and one registered USA swimmer that makes a club. And we were able to provide a certificate of insurance from Mr. Ward to the city attorney, which is a step up from what we had before. And I, I guess for me, I don't really know, I don't know how to move forward on the insurance portion because I, there's nowhere else for me to go. I have done everything that I've been asked to do. And that's, I, I don't have any answers past that.
I think we're very confident you are doing, both of you are probably doing everything you possibly can. I can, I empathize with you hitting a brick wall after brick wall.
You know what, I'm, I'm actually okay. I mean, I went through my whole emotional roller coaster with it all. But I'm okay because the, the end of the day, we're all people that are here for our kids. I've put in 20 years. And, you know, we hit a bumper in the road with some taxes and things like that, but that's going to be fixed.
Our main concern for our purposes right here, right now, is like we stated, our liability exposure. And we need to minimize that as much as possible. My concern there right here that we just don't have an answer yet is coverage may not completely protect the city. That's, that's a concern for us.
I will also note that we've been without, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
So, what we want to do is, we want to do what we can to take whatever action we can to protect the city. I have no problem at all if we just continue on with FRAC with the exoskeleton, if you will. Because underneath, it's, it's a mess right now and you're working on fixing it. And we'll do everything we can to help you. But that exposure, that insurance exposure, what we're looking at. If, in fact, it is excess insurance, we're doing business as usual, anyway. Am I saying pull the plug on FRAC? No, you can still, you know, put up that thing for the, for the kids so they can have some consistency as we're all leaning towards. But we do need to get some answers on the status of the insurance. And you need to continue your effort, if you will, to resolve the 501(c)(3) issue. It'll be a time challenge and we'll step in and we'll, we'll run it and the kids will get to do their thing. But the initial estimate, I believe, was two or three weeks or up to a month. That's obviously proven to be not realistic, which is understandable. Things change. We find out things. But we're here to work with you on that. We will.
I think I don't understand, I think at the last meeting, I thought it was my understanding she had said that two weeks was a very quick amount of time to have an update and that, that's what I understood, but...
What, you know, we're not here to rewind the tape and land.
No, I know. I just, I don't want to give you wrong information, so that's...
No worries. You don't know the answer, anyway. We don't either.
Right, right.
So, all we know is we're doing the best we can on our ends to get answers so we can get, make FRAC whole again.
And what can, what can I do as far as the insurance goes? Because I don't, I really don't know what else to do.
I'm not qualified to answer that question, but we...
May I jump in, Mr. Mayor?
Me.
Sharon has been working very hard to try in this fact, to try to find the insurance information. She has provided her insurance broker. Apparently, her insurance broker does not know what an endorsement or a rider to a policy is. I'm not sure why that is, or maybe there's a breakdown in communication there. That's definitely not Sharon's fault. But obviously, it creates, raises some flags on my end as to what may or may not be there. The only thing at this point that we could possibly do is get on the phone with the insurance broker and try to explain what an endorsement is or a policy rider is and that we would need to see them. I, I'm still not clear why the insurance broker doesn't know that. That concerns me a little bit. But Sharon has tried everything that she has. She's provided us with the information. I wouldn't feel comfortable calling the insurance broker, however, unless Sharon was on that phone call as well. I feel very strongly about making sure that the, that FRAC is involved in that process. But that's, that's been part of our problem is the other people that aren't here tonight aren't giving us the information that we should be having.
Okay.
And I'm fine with doing a conference, whatever you need to ask. If I just need to be on the phone, that's fine. I don't know what to ask for.
Alright. Brad, FRAC has been paying, I believe, it's 31,800, 31,800 a year?
Yes, that's correct.
And so, they've paid it for this year? Do you know how far, how are they, far are they paid up to?
Per month. They pay on it per month.
31 grand a month?
No. 2,650.
In the wrong business. How much?
2,650.
Alright, so it's by month. So, it totals out to 31, okay. So, have we paid for this month yet?
Did you pay this month?
We pay, so the way it sets up, we pay the month prior. So, like in September, by September. So like in September, by September tenth, we pay for August. It's always the month.
Oh, I gotcha.
The way the city set it up.
Okay. Um, I like, interested in some discussion as far as fees go. There was a seventeen dollar a month fee to make us break even. Uh, perhaps we should consider that until we get, um, frac, frac can make a contra- contract with us legally. Did someone have a comment? Yes?
I do, back to what I was saying, um, when the slides were presented, uh, my coaches, board members. We haven't had, uh, the opportunity to have a conversation, a sit down with Ann or Brad or. And I'm not going to make any sort of decision without consulting the very people that.
Right, we're, we're, we're not here to make any decision now, we're discussing this.
Okay.
Um, but, what my staff or our staff puts for, that's gospel to me.
Okay.
Whether you had a discussion or not, to be quite honest.
Okay.
It's important you do have one at some point.
Okay.
But right now, we're going by what staff tells us.
Okay.
For now.
Okay.
You know what I mean? That could change, everything can, but that's, that's our, that's our base right now.
Through the mayor for your discussion in regards to fees, um, just wanna, and. When, how long has the contract not been renewed?
Since twenty seventeen.
Yeah, but when in twenty seventeen? Are we two years, are we?
December of twenty seventeen.
So we're coming up on two years. Would it not be reasonable to expect that, that there would be some fee increase? I had kids playing travel everything and every year, they had to, they had to pony up, or not they. I had to pony up a little bit more money each year for the, for all the little stuff. I, you know, I, I think I heard you Sharon say that you didn't think it was reasonable for an increase in fees. I'm not sure that I, I agree with you on that. Did I hear you correct?
I don't, I don't think I said anything about raising fees this evening. I, I don't think I've talked about fees.
I, I, I thought you said leave the fees alone. Anyway, it, it doesn't.
No, I, I said to allow us to keep operating as is. I didn't discuss anything about fees, I don't believe.
Okay, then, um, then I acknowledge the fact that, that we just, I miscommunicated or misheard. Because I do think that it would be reasonable to discuss some fee increase. Based upon the fact that if we were negotiating a contract on an annual basis, I'm sure we would have talked about that. Now, that fee increase, uh, you know, that's up to, to, to get some feedback from staff on. But I do believe it's, I do believe for this particular, either whether you, whether you fundraise, whether we help you fundraise. Whether we help you sponsor, whether we find you sponsors or what have you. But we do need, we do need to, to, to at least have the discussion on increasing, uh, the fees. That's my point.
Through the mayor, um, Sharon, I, I want to acknowledge that you have been, you and Holly have worked, um. Um, very hard on this issue and, and it's been difficult, it's stressful, I'm sure. It's, um, it's probably shocking, right?
I, I've had A to Z of emotions.
Yes, I can, I can, um, understand and empathize with that. Um, as a councilwoman that, and loves everything that we do for our kids. The thing that I always go back, so I'm just kinda giving you some insight, everything that I go back to is, um, you know, listening to the students. When you brought the students and the room was full of families. Um, I felt badly that we made a mistake or something in that process. That we didn't clearly acknowledge the, the need of the program. Or miscalculated the decision and, you know, our mayor was generous enough to make that comment in public. And, um, and I felt badly as well. And, so now we're really into this. A lot of legal terms that are confusing even to myself with this insurance items that you, that sound confusing to you. And maybe sound a lot easier to Councilman Shaw, he's been doing this for a long time. Um, and I can appreciate that. Um, this, what I'm going back to is that we cannot interrupt the services to the students. To the families that are in the program. And I am not, um, I acknowledge and support and want frac to continue. Unfortunately, it's in a very, uh, it's, it's kinda like in an island on its own right now. Um, but not connected to the inland and, um. And I also have to, um, as a, to make a decision that I, the decision I make. Also affects not just the pool and frac, it also affects the entire community. Because, uh, in this decision, it would also say that, um. I may be, um, making allowances for one group than for not another group. I like to have, I, I like to be known that I'm a person of, um, you know, with equity in the decisions. And so, I think at this point, as a city. Maybe it's perhaps one of the things that we, we take on the program temporarily to help work through. Help through, and, and I know it doesn't sound like a good answer, you're not, it's probably not a comfortable thought to think of at this moment. Um, but temporarily, until frac becomes whole again. Uh, because I feel a heavy responsibility if any child or anyone was hurt. Out, out on our pool and we don't have the protection or have the agreements. Um, you know, there's plenty, let me just say this clearly and simple, there's plenty of blame to go around. There's parts in the city we, we missed, we didn't take care of our business and there's parts on the other end. So let's just be, that's done, move on, but what do we do now forward? You're trying to fix the insurance issue, trying to get the suspensions with the nonprofit. We need to now decide, we carry this forward until frac becomes frac again all the way through. And I'm, I'm, I'm wanting our city to help temporarily, get you through the finish line. And then frac picks it up again and continues the work. But you, you said it best, you completely said it best because you said, parents, this is up to parents that are volunteers. And I've worked with tons of volunteer groups and I understand how challenging that is when you're dealing with vol- volunteers. And I appreciate that, but we also have to make sure that all those families that are stepping in our pool. Along with side with you and our team, they have to be protected. And financially, we also, we just, we just said no to another group because the funding wasn't there. And so we have to figure out what to do if the city takes this on temporarily. So that's what I'm leaning towards right now, Mayor.
Thank you, one question if you don't mind. The, um, members of frac, they're on a swim team that starts local, they can go all the way up to Olympics? Based on?
Correct.
Or some, so the, um, forgive me, I don't know all the terms. But, if we did take it over until you become whole, do they lose their tracking? Do they lose their scores, their ratings, all that stuff through USA swimming?
No, um, anyone registered as a USA swimmer, there's a database. They do have to, um, stay attached to a USA registered team. Um, it's not as simple as no, it's, um, they also have to be at a practice with a USA registered coach. You cannot, um, have a sixteen-year-old running the practice or even an eighteen-year-old that hasn't been background checked. Um, um, so no, the data never goes away. As far as if they've completed a race and they, um, achieve a specific time, that stays in the USA swimming database.
Is the only way for them to have, for the swimmers to have those qualified people there, is that to utilize frac people? Or does the city have that?
The city does not have anyone that can do that, so not to say that they couldn't hire people to do that.
So as far as the tracking and continuing everything, um, we were able to do it or?
Uh, she's correct, we would hire, we would have to hire, uh.
Someone.
Uh, a, a part-time employee or whatever their status would be in order for the USA.
Right.
Uh, with all that to be legitimate and that they keep all their, their data.
Alright.
But it can be done.
Or we go business as usual as frac, they go on this so-called exoskeleton until they get their paperwork and whatnot in order. We go on city insurance, what we're doing anyway, and we have that person we don't have to hire in place. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we're saving a having to hire somebody.
Well, and, and put them through, through the proper training.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. That being said, I'm kinda in that, that direction, just for the, for the group's information.
Through the mayor, um, Sharon, I hope you understand, we're trying to find a way to keep the kids in the pool. Okay, to keep them competitive because that's where this all started. The kids are part of the community, they weren't the entire pool, but they are a part of this community. So, going back to a couple of comments that, and. We can't help frac fundraise because they're not eligible to fundraise because they're not a nonprofit status. So they can't use that as a window to, to fundraise, but.
Respectfully, we could engage in supporting swimming for the youth. I've already been approached by people who are interested in adopting a lane.
Oh, yeah.
To cover the deficit.
Yeah, no, I was, I was about to head there because we have our foundation and stuff through the city. So there's other, other avenues, but we can't, um, if I misread it, I, I apologize. But we can't have them soliciting because they don't have the status. Um, I, I'm, I'm back to, you know, really square one in this. As far as, uh, I talked to a couple of the parents on National Night Out. Their main concern, and I'll tell you exactly what the parent told me, she said, we're not allowed to sign up for going into the winter. Because I don't know if frac's going to be around. And it's like, that's before anything ever came out, so why was frac even, you know, a question at that point if it was gonna be around? I didn't ask her, I just made her a promise. I said, we're gonna try to keep the kids in the pool because that's where we wanted to go.
Do you want me to answer that question? Um, when I found out about this on July eleventh, um, I had no idea if we would be open. Because there had been, we had not been before council at that point, we had not. There's no way that I'm going to feel good about taking money from families when there's no stability. As far as to, at, at that point, we were told we were going to be out from September through January. So there was no way that I was going to take additional families because they're paying to USA Swimming the insurance fee. They're paying, um, a registration fee, they're paying dues. It, it's not honest to take their money full well knowing, hey, we may not be here, um, September one. Um, the other issue is because of that happening, I didn't get to place my bid for the February meet in twenty twenty. Which is a USA sponsored event, um, we don't have a meet for, that, that's a gone, gone window. Um, and so there were lots of reasons behind me saying, I'm so sorry. But I also told every single person, hey, when we get this figured out, we would love to have you. Um, so, and, and I still stand by that until, until we know what's going on. Um, I, I'm not comfortable taking on, um, additional families or their money.
Okay, well, this was a current person that was still going, you still have all the kids in the pool and stuff right now, correct?
Correct.
Everything's running as normal?
Yes.
Okay, uh, because they weren't a new one coming in, it had something to do with winter and I don't know all the logistics, but this is what she told me. Uh, the night there, where I was going with that is, looking at the future. The other comment she made was, straight up was, I don't mind paying more because that's what it's important. And when we look at this, and correct me, Mr. Chaffin, if I'm, if I misstep here. But whether or not we take the program on or we let the shell run as normal. We have to provide a lifeguards in order and have that expense so that we are covered by our insurance, correct?
We do have to provide the lifeguards, that's correct.
So there's additional expenses there, so, you know, I'm.
She's saying no.
It is not an additional expense, we are in the water with other programs, the lifeguard has always been something that's provided.
Okay, um, I was under the impression that you guys were providing your own lifeguards under previous, is Mr. McIntyre?
Yeah, so, so Sharon's correct, so we, we have two lifeguards on duty during this time because we have lap swimming going on as well. And so one guard is paid for through the lap swimming and then the other guard is paid through frac.
Okay, so, but we would still.
Employees are, both, uh, lifeguards are city employees.
Okay, alright.
Just to clarify.
Okay, so either way, there's, we could split that pie, you know, twelve different ways. There's still at least one person that we would, that has to be on the payroll to cover for frac. Um, in the interim, I, you know, I wanna see the kids thrive. But I think it's, we need to look at option B for an interim period of time. Uh, like, uh, Councilwoman Esmondola said, um, you know, we need to limit our exposure. And that may be right now, just taking and collecting the fee as was presented with a slight increase to cover our overhead. And then, let the, let Mr. McIntyre figure out what our best option is and give frac the time they need. Uh, if they can get it resolved in three months, great. They don't get it resolved in eighteen months, I mean, it's whatever. But my concern is continuing a program, but also protecting our liability. And then as Councilmember Boom Garden said, we have different avenues there to help offset and defray some of the costs. Because we do have our foundation and stuff and people wanna sponsor lanes and different things. This council's been thinking outside of the box, trying to keep these kids in the program. But we've got some legal hurdles that we have to overcome and they just didn't creep up on us a couple of months ago. So, we just have to work together through this. So, um, I think we should be heading towards looking at option B. Whatever that one or two was that was up here tonight to figure out how we can limit our exposure. Because it is a key phrase when you get in insurance, whether you're additionally insured or excess insurance. I mean, those are some things that if we, so to speak, have the program in-house for a period of time. We can make sure that that language is exactly the way it needs to be and be a, a gap filler. So, yeah, no pun intended with Gaucci Aquatic, but.
I guess where I sit on that is I, I question why someone walking in and paying four dollars to swim. Or five dollars if they bust out the whole full price. Um, why are they given the advantage when we're paying thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars a year? And we're not given that same, you know, if you're saying the city needs to take it over for, for liability purposes and things like that. Um, I guess I'm not really seeing the, um, equality there. Because, uh, I see people walk in every day that buy a ten visit pass, they pay four bucks and they're insured. Um, how are frac participants any less valuable?
Through the mayor, it's not that they're less valuable, it starts when you get into insurance and the exposure. Then, the reason that they're there, there's going to be more danger for a competitive swimmer. Just because of the nature of them jumping off of the, um, platform, whatever you call those things, the starting blocks. And things of that nature in diving than a child that's playing in the zero depth pool. There's, there's additional risk that goes along with the sport, just like there does with baseball, football, soccer. Everything else, there's additional risk because of the nature of what that program is running.
So I'm gonna have to disagree because I'm somebody that's at public swim every day with kids flipping off the side. And they actually don't have a, a USA swimming experienced coach right there with them supervising their activities. We have kids, if you're eleven years old, you can walk in there by yourself and do, and believe me, we see it every day. So, um, I'm actually respectfully disagreeing with that, but, uh, public swim. I see a lot more risky things happening, running on deck, um, flipping off the side, uh. I won't even go into what all I see at public swim, but, um. You know, and it is what it is, I mean, you, you guys make the decision and, 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 you know, then we decide. What we want to do with that and, and, uh, you know, I, but I do, I think if someone can walk into gap without any waiver. Without anything and they can pay four dollars and be assured that if something were to happen to them, they're going to be covered. You have a program that's been paying into the city for literally decades, thousands and thousands of dollars. Um, and, and I, I don't, I don't understand because we are supplying a certificate coverage. I understand that it becomes at a different level if there's a contract in place. We have been running without a contract since twenty seventeen. Um, you know, so I guess I, when I look at the comparison of kids walking in there and paying a minimum four bucks. As it sits right now, any kid in my program that's over fourteen, rather than staying with frac. They have the opportunity to walk into gap and pay that four dollars and get in and swim if they so choose. Without being on frac.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
I, I hear what you're saying and I'm not an expert in the.
I I hear what you're saying and I'm not an expert in the swimming aspect. I'll be completely honest with you. I think that what little that I've been accumulating in the last several meetings and a lot of reading and listening and intensively listening, I believe that the difference is that, you know, there's a set of leisure, there's a leisure of activity and then there is a competitiveness of a sport where and and beyond that, that's all I really can give you about the swimming part. And then and then there's this other part where I I think I stated earlier that there were errors on both parties that where we're at and we're trying to find the best resolution to the, to this situation. And uh, we might, if if we could have this utopia opportunity that you frac had, it's nonprofit. I would rather we go through a contract, deal through that and take, and it's a done conversation, Sharon. That's truly would be my my preference completely. I'm looking at all the options, opportunity at this moment, and I don't find that we're coming to a, it's not an easy, an easy decision and it's not an easy answer. And at this point, in order for us to meet the requirement for your students that you have in the competitive swimming through USA, I want to make sure they stay competitive. And at the same time, we're not dealing, we're not talking about the gap services over here because gap services is separate from this conversation at this point because we're trying to find a answer to how do we keep this going forward? And that now looks like additional revenue cost based on the information provided by our staff. And that's why I think um, Councilman Boomgarden mentioned other options to help um, alleviate the potential additional excess um, cost because it it totals into staffing time now. And I think, so it's, it's, that's where we're at. That's how I am understanding it. If I'm completely wrong, please help me understand it clearly because that's how I'm gaining, making this decision. Okay? And I hope you understand that I'm trying to be fair in the whole process. Thank you.
Yeah. Brad, how much is it for a pass? Is it weekly, monthly? Uh, if they came into, if they came into the pool and bought a pass, how much is it?
Are you referring to lap swim?
Yes.
Like during the front time?
Yes, yes.
It's $5 or if they buy a pass, it's $40. So it's a 10 visit, you get a dollar break if you buy it in bulk of 10.
Okay, and how many days a week are you training?
Well, it depends on the child. We offer practice Monday through Friday, but not all of them come.
So five days a week. So what Stacy is trying to say is, is she can go buy two passes a month for 80 bucks and have the same, we're, the the pool's covered under our insurance and they still have the same program and everybody should be happy. Is that tell we get the situation taken care of?
Repeat that one more time.
If if one of her student, so frac came in uh, or just, one of her swimmers came in, bought two passes.
Yes.
They have 20 days of swimming.
That's four weeks.
For for 80 bucks. Okay? And they're covering under our insurance and they can lap swim. And then, so everybody's gonna be happy until the situation's taken care of. They're insured, they got lap swim and everybody's taken care of. Is am I right or wrong? Can you help me here? I'm I'm trying to understand this.
Sure, so I understand, I understand your.
I'm going a different angle. I'm going a different angle is what I'm doing.
Sure. The the, it's a yes, no answer, meaning that if we uh, open it up like any other program, the numbers, as the numbers come through, so we're not going to turn anyone away, which currently frac currently has the ability to cap their numbers or whatever, but they would lose that ability to do that and we would just take comers as they come. So so we could do that, um, but it does not mean one exclusive rights to use the facility and that's pretty much kind of what they're paying for.
Okay, exclusiveness.
Yeah, that's that's the exclusive part. Um, so that would be the caveat to that, that that concept.
I think also you have the structure, the competitive structure. And we talked about the tracking or whatever the word is, where we we would lose that. We would also use, lose that one lifeguard that frac is paying for.
Well, I'm just trying to help.
I know what you're doing.
The insurance thing, I'm trying, I'm trying.
I think I need to clarify some stuff real quick. I don't want to step on.
We're coming down to the end though, the horse is really dead.
Right.
But let me, I need to clarify the whole lifeguard thing. So in frac's contract for all these years, it has been that they do not pay for lifeguards as long as they're doing it during our recreation programs and that's how it has always ran. So as of right now, they do not pay for lifeguards because they run it during our other program times that we do require lifeguards for.
I think one position is paid with frac fees though, based on, if I heard you right, Brad?
No, that's if we were to do the options.
Oh.
As of right now, they pay their monthly and, yeah. And includes the lifeguard.
Alright, so what we would be saving would be the employee we're gonna have to hire to track for the USA Swim folks.
What we'd be saving.
I don't know, I'm not sure what the right word is.
So and then um, as far as like the options up here, I have to say too, with the red, the expenditures don't change with either option, no matter what, those are the expenditures. Uh, the revenues, on the other hand, you have to understand that's based on the 60, 60 participants. So whether we have 20 participants or 60 participants, it is not going to change the re, the the expenditure cost. So we might get 40 participants, whereas right now we get a monthly fee that covers, does that make sense? Like they're paying us 2650, that doesn't mean we're gonna get 2650 if we take over that program because we might only get 40 children. So the expenditures don't change, but the revenues would.
Okay.
You're you're paying, you're, the difference that I'm understanding is that it's a monthly fee for 60 students.
And it benefits us more than.
Correct, right?
Right.
And what the fee structure that you're changing is based on participant total, based on a fee.
Yes.
And so that could vary.
Yes, but the expenditures do not vary.
The the expenditures stay the same because we have a staffing.
We have to have by law, all those things, so.
Thank you, I'm clear, thanks.
Alright. I tried. Yeah, yeah, it was good. Okay.
May we please have the list, there was two options presented to us, may we please have those up on the screen?
So this is option two.
Oh, this one here is.
Mm-hmm.
There was one in the, in the staff report and um, were listed different things.
Well, so if it listed.
A through A and an A through D. Somewhere that I read.
What we did for the purposes of the PowerPoint, we broke it down.
Okay.
But you have really two options. One, again, you don't change the fee. And then you see what the numbers are.
Right.
And if you do change the fee, which is option two, then that's what you get right there.
My bad, Brad, that was a confidential memo I read, it wasn't a staff report. I was referring to that, so.
Yeah, this information, this information was in the.
Alright.
In the memo.
Brad.
Staff's looking for a direction as it relates to.
Maybe in your option two you were referring to.
Yeah.
From the same, yeah, okay.
But in both options, the city is running the program.
Correct.
It's just a question of what we're charging for the fee.
Correct.
Okay.
And if council wants to take over to to help for a short period of time or whatever that time period is.
Well, through the mayor.
Yep.
Because, I mean, we were presented with two tonight, but really what you have is there's a um, third potential option that was brought up earlier, which was the fact of can we partner up and go back to a rent structure with a satellite team for an interim period of time? Because the meeting last time, it was no one's willing to do that, but tonight in the opening remarks from the public uh, mentioned there might be some discussion there. So we really have two different paths. You have keep it in-house, which fee do you charge? Or do you look at um, possibly partnering with another uh, club so that you can do a uh, flat fee? And I say we just need to look at all of it and see what, see what is available to us. No decision made right now, just see what's available, give frac some more time, but see what we can come up with.
I'd like to give some more specific direction to staff than that.
Through the mayor.
Okay.
Yes. Just a reminder that even though we've had people called up, we haven't opened up the public comment. We may want to do that before giving.
I've got a note to myself for that as well. Is there any public comment, by the way? No, done.
I've got a question for, through the mayor, can I get Stacy? So, yeah, please, um, yeah, I'm sorry, Sharon, I'm, I'm sorry, Sharon. Be honest. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So 18 more dollars a month. I know e- everything's a burden, but is that gonna be like, it'll be $4.50 more a week for a child?
I personally can't answer that question today. Um, I will tell you that the satellite team thing is not an option for me.
Okay.
Um, and I won't, um, and 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 again, I respect that you guys make your decision, but I want you to respect that I will speak to my team before I say I will or will not do anything. Um, that's just something that's super important to me.
Okay, so.
I respect that.
Yeah, so ask them if they, if you could, please, if, you know, $4.50 more a week's gonna be, it'd be $18 a month.
And that would be with the program being run by the city.
Correct?
Temporarily, from what I understand.
Temporary, it's a temporary situation.
Yes.
Just to clarify, there was actually a third option of letting frac continue as is um, along with the two options of frac, of the city taking over for a limited term.
Alright. I think we've all expressed kind of where we are, where where our positions are. I reiterate the fact that I, even though it's cleaner to have the city just take over, I don't, I like the to um, the idea, this is to benefit the kids, of not making frac go away, have them have the consistency of still being a member of frac even though it's less, it's not necessarily official legally, but then the tracking for their, their, what's the word? Their points or whatever, they.
Times.
All that. Um, I don't want them to lose that. What's the point of being in an organized club if you can't, for up to, I know it's probably gonna be a year or so, I don't know. I have no idea how long it's just gonna take. But um, that's kind of like my opinion, is to keep you guys doing business. We're insured anyway. We have, we've been told by the attorney that it doesn't hurt anything to have you there. Although I do acknowledge that it's a lot cleaner to just have the city take, take it over. But I think the benefit of having you there and the, and the what frac can bring to the table through the national organization is important. Um, and part of the purpose of of the club to begin with, so. Direction of staff, I think we're just gonna continue business as usual. We have, we have some insurance to look into, we have some more 501(c)(3) research to take care of. And then explore the option number three through another club, if that's even viable.
She's saying no, mayor.
Let's no to her.
Oh.
That's, which is fine, but we're, we're, we're weighing all of our options right now. Is that clear enough for you, Brad, or would you like more than that?
Just, let's still let me repeat it. So leave uh, the way it is right now with frac. Don't change anything.
For now.
And move forward with having a conversation with the gentleman over there about a satellite program. Those two things.
That's what she, that we were talking about, Dave?
Add in the comparison as far as looking at that versus the city. It really needs to be three different options. We're not looking to take the kids out of the pool tonight. So that's where we get to continue on as norm right now. But from the city's perspective, let's look at it, uh, those two options, whether it's partnering with a satellite. Um, and then also uh, you know, taking it underneath the city's wings. That would be, I think, the direction that I would like to see. And I'm seeing consensus nods across here, Mr. Mayor, so I think that's really our direction is explore two options, but keep everything the same in the interim. But do we want to kind of get a time certain back on this so they're not sitting here in six months?
Through, through the mayor.
That was up to us. I would say we can set a date. We can't set a date for something that's out of our control, it's gonna take some time.
Right.
I would like an update, not next meeting, but is 30 days too much to add? Is that too soon of a turnaround, you guys think?
Through, through the mayor, before you go through that, Councilman Shaw, repeat the two recommendations, the two items that you just stated because I'm, I've heard differently from the mayor, I believe.
Okay. Option one, city take on the program, whether or not, whatever the fee structure is.
Correct.
Option two, partner with a satellite club to have them pay us rent and run a satellite club here in the interim. That's the two options. And then the constant is keep the kids in the pool right now until we work this out.
Okay, that's clear to me. I'm, I'm with you on that.
And the two, the two options will come back, will be the same two options you've seen tonight, just.
I'm adding back my third option, and that is to keep frac going as usual, however the city will run it, but yet we keep the structure in place for the kids and the, and the tracking their times and whatnot.
And I believe that, and I'll defer this to Sharon, but I believe if the city takes over the program, that it does not affect the kids, the times or anything else.
Okay.
But I will.
Concern there.
Is that correct?
As long as the people running the program.
Are USA.
They register certified background check.
And I think that was a sticking point is if we don't keep frac in there, we have to, we have to pay to hire somebody.
No.
Unless I'm mistaken.
Um, through.
Three somebodies.
Um, through the mayor, uh, I I'm really concerned about not having an agreement with frac. And we, the city could hire a lifeguard who would be certified as a USAA. I mean, they'd have to be trained and they'd have to be certified. But if we're going to continue to use frac, I would strongly recommend to the council that we come back to you in two weeks with an update on where we are, for sure. And that, and no more than 30 days, that we try to resolve the issue one way or the other. Because not having an agreement with an organization that is not a valid 501(c)(3) is creating legal risks for the city. Should there be uh, a catastrophic event or a lawsuit filed against the city by frac? And I'm talking worst case scenarios, but the fact is, without an agreement, we are at risk. And I I have to tell you that. So I would definitely come back in two weeks with an update and come back again in in 30 days with um, asking the council to make a a fairly significant decision.
I think the additional information would be very beneficial. Right now, we're kind of not knowing where to go. We haven't, we've had a lot of people, apparently with our attorney and and your folks, that have not returned your call, you don't have the info. So it's hard to make a decision. In principle, um, that I agree with that. We don't, we want to minimize exposure completely, but at the same time, we want to make sure the kids are able to do what they have to do. Hopefully, it will appear on the outside to them as seamless as possible. We can deal with this amongst us, but um, I think that's good. If two weeks is a good turnaround, I would, I would thought maybe a little quick, but that's fine. We can do two weeks, probably every two weeks until we get this bad boy put, put to rest.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that you know that the issue's moving forward.
Yeah.
And that progress is being made, even if we're not on the finish line, that we're getting closer because there is exposure.
Yep, alright, thank you very much. Brad, does that help you out?
Yeah, I I think I've got the direction.
Alright.
Yeah, I do have the direction, thank you.
Alright. Thank you all very much. Anne, did you have anything you want to say? Okay, you're kind of hovering around the microphone. Alright, alright. That being said, we'll move on. Business from the council, begin with Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things, welcome to our new city manager, Michael Rock. I had my first meeting with the city manager this afternoon and looking forward to that working relationship. Just an update on the master tax share agreement. We uh, that process continues to move forward and there's a meeting with our consultant that's occurring tomorrow morning, so we'll keep, keep pressing ahead as that's related to the Bog Stewart master plan. I attended a planning commission meeting uh, last Wednesday and there was some uh, some issues that were raised. And for the benefit of the rest of the council, um, I did pose a couple of questions to uh, both the, the new city manager and to the um, our city attorney. Um, there was some confusion at the meeting. I'm confident after talking with both the city attorney and um, the city manager that uh, there's the beginnings of a plan. Parliamentary procedure was an issue. Um, there was a lot of uh, appeared to be confusion at the dais in regards to motions, amendments, uh, et cetera. I also have made a suggestion, um, and that there be a uh, a planning session or joint session between the planning commission and the city council. We have some significant projects headed our way, uh, Bog Stewart master plan being one, harder specific. uh, Bog Stewart master plan being one, harder specific plan being another, and I think that there could be definitely some benefit in just a workshop, understanding expectation, roles and responsibilities between the planning commission and the city council. Encouraged to hear that the county has hired an o, an office of emergency services managers, one certainly just needs to take a look at what's happening on the east coast right now to understand the importance of disaster preparedness. And that was one of the things that I feel continually feel is an important aspect of this city, uh, to keep the, keep its eye on, I was encouraged to hear the police chief talk about it in his presentation. Attended the Dancing With Our Stars, and the only reason I want to mention it is because our, our Canine Officer Kenny Soles participated. I think the mayor participated in that one year too, did you win?
Not this year.
Oh, no, last year anyway.
I did the second year.
Oh, you did too, all right, so I guess that just leaves Manny, Dave and I, right? Anyway.
All three, all three at the same time.
Awesome, that, uh.
I didn't win, it's okay.
Awesome, awesome thing, anyway, um, the stand down, uh, the veteran stand down, that was the first time I actually attended, very impressive, I guess it's the second largest in the state of California, um, and I think that, uh, I think that's an excellent event, final thing I'm just gonna say is, I am so, so, so very encouraged by the regional cooperation that's going on right now between Yuba County, Yuba City, Sutter County, Marysville, et cetera. I hope we can continue to, to continue embrace that, it's, it's making a difference, you know, some people get a little freaked out about the term regional, but in reality, we are a region, and, and to work more closely together with our allied agencies, I think, is, is in the best interest of the city, and I mean, I'm really excited about the opportunities for that, thank you, mayor.
Thank you, good job. Councilmember Escondola.
Thank you, um, welcome, Michael, and, um, you have already proven yourself to help us move through things in a very, um, well-thought-out manner, so I appreciate that. And, um, we had a very nice showing this afternoon for people to greet you, and then it was nice, lovely to have your wife here also, so thank you so much. One of the area, one of the issues that as a city and as communities across the nation, I also wanted to talk a little bit about, um, mass shootings and the issues of that occurring across the country, and it was encouraging to see our police doing the active shooter trainings and going to the different churches, and, um, I believe that that is an area that, um, our community truly needs to take a closer look at in being prepared, not necessarily, which is encouraging to see, hear that the county has an emergency preparedness person to help us for natural disaster, but there's also human disasters when, you know, individuals are just violently doing these kinds of things across the nation, and, um, the first school shooting in the nation occurred in Lynn Hurst High School, if you're not aware of that, and so to say that we are immune of this issue is, um, I think, uh, shortsighted in, in any way, and I, I'm encouraged to hear that our PD is, um, working towards training our community, um, in that. Also, that we are going to be hiring a police officer, or perhaps assigning or reassigning a police officer helping with our homeless situation, based on the data that our chief noted, it's, uh, it's a good thing that we're, we're doing that for our community. And the last thing that, um, was, every, every year that the Yuba Sutter Veteran Stand Down has been held, is one of those community things that just hits you right in, in the heart and of the gut, because you, you see these individuals, men and women, um, of all ages, uh, this, this brotherhood, sisterhood, and I've attended for many years, and the first year that I attended, uh, I was there to be as a resource, had a resource table along with many others. But I have to acknowledge that Michael Nichols, who is the person who started along with other volunteers, he was recognized as the twenty eighteen Veteran of the Year by Assemblyman, um, Gallagher, and, um, worthy of the recognition, and also Congressman Garamendi attends every year. And what gave me pride also to be there was that all of us as a council were there together, and I know that Shaw was a veteran, or is a veteran, I should say, excuse me for the, yeah, and you're still here, my friend, thank you, thank you. And, and Councilman, um, Cardosa, he has been volunteering there for years. Uh, he gets there bright and early, he helps set up the whole place, and even though for those that believe that it's minimal to greet a person and help them in the door, I think that that's a tremendous value that you do for our city, Vice Mayor, and I want to thank you for that, because I see you there, and you're directing, you're helping people, you're thousands of veterans, and, and this year, I think they had, um, over like twelve hundred people coming in, and they reduced the number of the days. But I think as a council, may, perhaps, I don't know if we recognize the, the Yuba Sutter Veterans Stand Down, um, but I think that that's something we should do as a, as a council, as a group, and bring in and recognize that the volunteers, the board of the volunteers, and, uh, and, and do that together, um, those are the things that I feel like we're worthy to share with you today for the one, two, three, four people, and the re, two, and five, and oh, video world, and three of you are staff, four, but anyway, thank, thank you, Vice Mayor, excellent.
Yes, sir.
Guess after the last comments, I should start by boo. Cause I was a veteran, I'm still here. Um, I will keep mine very, very brief, uh, I attended basically everything that Councilman Boom Garden, uh, attended as well, and, uh, it's nice to see the city, um, represented across the board, my committees, uh, start up again as we're in another month here next week. We have the master tax agreement, uh, meeting going on tomorrow morning, uh, just bring a couple of things quick to mind, uh, we're in rodeo season, tomorrow is Western Wednesday, the following Wednesday is Western Wednesday. Uh, my time has been spent on the back of a horse getting ready for the rodeos, so, um, we're in high rodeo time, so, uh, looking forward to that, I do want to go back to the, uh, the veteran stand down, and, um, it's a tremendous event, uh, this was the first time I really was able to go down and see what's going on, and commend everyone that's involved for that event one time a year. But I just want to remind people, as a veteran, I've learned from other veterans, and it's all the things in between the other three hundred and sixty-two days a year that makes a difference in those men and women's lives, and, uh, one little simple act of generosity that was taught to me a long time ago, that I, I do now when I'm out, is if I happen to be out to dinner anywhere and I see a veteran setting over, and, uh, they're the ones you're talking about are real easy to see, because they got the veterans' baseball cap on, that's got all the ribbons, and it says Vietnam, or you know, Desert Storm or something, you, you don't need any recognition for it, just get the waiter or waitress to come over to you and say, hey, bring me their check, don't tell them who did it, it's paid for, and just pay it forward to them, because the sacrifice they made was tremendous, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, I like, uh, Councilwoman Escondola's, uh, recommendation, and I think the appropriate time to recognize them, if you're willing to do it, would be our meeting closest to Veterans Day.
Absolutely. Mr. Cardosa.
Okay. Attended a couple of meetings the last couple of weeks, uh, attended the Feather River Air Quality Management District meeting. Uh, we got some good news, within the next six months, they will be done hauling out of Paradise. They're down to their final stages, they're down to the, uh, last little bit where it's more technical, uh, they've, uh, they've cut down on some trucking, so, uh, we got some good word on that, they said within the next six months, Paradise will be clean, be done. I also attended the Sutter Community Affordable Housing Board Meeting, uh, just to let everybody know that all of our affordable housing in the communities, that's, uh, it's gonna be Sutter County and Calusa, uh, they're all full. Everything's full, and there's a waiting list, uh, so, uh, we're working on that. Uh, chamber event, uh, council member Escondola and Shaw, we attended the business after hours for, uh, the Gnani's Auto Body Shop, he had his ten-year anniversary, so we gave him a little presentation here, uh, last Thursday night. Community events, of course, both council members talked about the stand down, and yes, I had the honors of greeting over twelve hundred veterans, shook everyone of their hands, uh, wished them, you know, thanked them for their service, sent them on their ways where they need, uh, proper areas they need to go. Been doing it now, this will be my fifth year, totally enjoy it, it's a fun time, and get to know a lot of people, meet a lot of veterans, a lot of people. I attended the first Dunkin' Donuts First Northern California Heroes Award Ceremony. They, uh, gave the award to Awida Wakefield, the founder and executive director of the Yuba Sutter Diabetes Resource Center, so Dunkin' Donuts has started award ceremony in our community, so this is the first year, and they're going onward with that, yeah, that was, and Diabetes Association, they gave donuts and coffee. Thought that was kind of neat, uh, also attended the reception, council, we attended the steps, the reception for, uh, Steve Smith, the New Sutter County Administrator, and, uh, I attended the Nicholas Parade yesterday. I was in it, there was over a thousand folks in the community of Nicholas, had a fun time there, and then last, uh, I'd like to mention this Saturday, at the Gap, we are having our Alls Timers, uh, event, so please come down, uh, it's a great turnout, and what do they say, in twenty twenty-five, we're gonna have the cure? That's to keep, that's our goal, twenty twenty-five, we're gonna have the cure for all those timers, so I'll be down there volunteering Saturday, so come on down and let's have some fun, there's gonna be a walk, and there'll also be some resource, uh, folks there also to help, and that's it for me, thank you.
All right, I, I can't, uh, even though it's already been mentioned, I cannot, um, I cannot not mention the veteran stand down, it was very, very great big event, um, a lot of representation, one thing that was encouraging, I mean, Mike is putting so much effort into that, making that, um, well, the second largest in the entire state, which is awesome, but he's even attracted, uh, congressman, Congressman Garamendi came and he spoke briefly, and he mentioned, I think it was called the Oath Act, I think it was, when we talk about housing, housing is a big deal, um, everywhere, including here in Yuba City, but one thing was they were talking about leveraging the, um, was it veterans' checks, dis, or their checks that they get, a group of five or six disability, five or six of them together, which could make a mortgage payment, so they can make a, a home, build a home for them, and, and have that fu, be funded that way, so, um, called the Oath Act, and he, in fact, he had to leave there, I think, in order to go down and, um, deal with something in, in that endeavor, so that's very encouraging to hear that in the works, hopefully we can bring that here. Um, very big turnout as always, and, um, not only do you walk amongst heroes, but also friends, all for a good cause, uh, and a good thing, and it's really nice to be a part of, um, helping those folks out. I spoke briefly at a, um, Kiwanis Luncheon, talked about essentially the, worked out to the state of the city, and then a bunch of questions, which was, are always welcome. We are continuing to work on our Economic Development Commission, not only the city's one, we're getting ready to add another two members, we're supposed to be doing some interviews, um, soon for some applicants, also, we're partnering with the, the local Economic Development Commission, along with the, um, Greater Sacramento Economic Council, all coming, coming together with the purpose of developing our economy here locally. How that looks, there, there's many avenues that we're taking, but it is encouraging to get kind of a, some focus, gather some, um, valid, um, opinions and perspectives from different, um, people in the community that come from different places, all contribute to the bigger piece of the pie, so we're looking forward to some positive changes there. Um, wanted to take an opportunity to also welcome you, Michael, hit the ground running, that's for sure, welcoming you and your family to Yuba City, and also, uh, on a fun thing, um, remember that anybody who's interested in mentoring a young person, our launch program, or that the city's helping out in conjunction with Sutter County Schools and Yuba City Unified, still accepting applications, uh, it's a whopping three hours a month, hour and a half, an hour and a half, at the Senior Center for Mentoring a Young Person who's been identified as being at risk, and hopefully we can make them make a right turn instead of a left turn. More information on the website, or I can provide that too, also, we're doing the Mayor's Cup, that's what we're calling it, Brad has put a lot of work into that, this thing here, and I have a flyer, I have a bunch of flyers, anybody's interested in that, um, it's pickleball, we're gonna do it at our pickleball, our brand new pickleball courts, um, teams of two people in a tournament, we're asking for a two hundred dollar donation, but it's for a good cause. My, I think it's Dancing With Our Stars, the five thousand dollar donation, but this is only a whopping two hundred, and it is going to, um, the Friends of Yuba Sutter, Yuba City Parks and Rec, but also to Casa de Esperanza and the Environmental Alternatives, which is a foster agency, um, here in town, so good time for a good cause, it's a win-win no matter what, our sponsors are Ron and Norma Giavennetti, and, um, In-N-Out Trailer Leasing, um, who were kind enough to, um, help us out with that. So that is on September thirteenth, beginning at three o'clock until five P.M. at our pickleball courts. Um, that is basically, it ends right before a sod buster, so go over there, do your thing, win the tournament, win the perpetual trophy, and then go over and, uh, put on a cowboy hat, so, we're doing that. Pickleball cowboy hat. I dare you. I dare, cowboy boots. So, having said that, we are going to adjourn to closed session, Mr. City Attorney, can you please read the closed session items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we have one item for closed session, Council of Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, one potential case, we do not anticipate any reportable action, and given that it's this late at night, we'll probably adjourn the meeting afterwards outside the council chambers, thank you.
Very good, I will, I will adjourn, I would, um, unfortunately have, um, we're gonna adjourn in memory of supervisor, Sutter County Supervisor Ron Solider's daughter Rachel, who recently passed, so in memory of her, we will close this meeting.